Good evening, my name is Lois Spence and I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetland Commission meeting for the town of Monroe. It is June 9th, 2021, and the time is 7:02. I will take a roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's remote meeting. Please answer here or present, starting with myself, Lois Spence, Vice Chair and Secretary. Jim Stewart, who motions that he's here. He's our treasurer and a licensed soil scientist and professional engineer.
Project Director and Surveyor, Licensed Surveyor.
I have to update my paperwork, okay.
Okay.
Clark Jengris.
Here.
Ross Mastarocco. He's absent today. B.J. Hall.
Here.
Our Joe Chapman, our Inland Wetlands Agent.
Here.
Donna Suzinski, the Office Manager.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud, the Recording Secretary. Here. Before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland watercourses within the town.
Somebody needs to be muted.
Who is that? Somebody. Joe, you can mute when you're not speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? And everybody else seems to be off, okay. Yeah, the objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses within the town of Monroe. Our procedure, in the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearing is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission, during which and after which, the commission will be asking the applicant questions. Due to remote meeting status, I'd like to keep the applicant, to keep presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town, staff, and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments be made to the chair or commission. After any and all comments pro, inopposition, or of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Again, due to remote meeting status, please keep comments or questions direct, and a time limit of three minutes may be invoked. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new material is entered in as evidence or testimony during the response. Please keep all comments pro and con, specific to inland wetland-related matters. Other applications that do not involve a public hearing will follow a similar format, with the exception that there is no public comment allowed. Meeting follows our published agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to our agenda?
I do not have any changes to the agenda.
Great. Okay, then we shall begin. Okay, this is the time for general public participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to have any conversation with us? Or just about anything? We have one caller unmuted.
Hello, this is Gary Perone, 100 Cross Hill Road.
Hello, Gary, you're on the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. What can we do for you?
Okay, I'm calling about the pond restoration at 100 Cross Hill Road.
Okay, you're on the agenda for two activities from now. So if you could just hold on for a little bit, we will be right to your application, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no others, we have subdivision report recommendations to P&amp;Z, we have none. Regular meetings, IWC 2021-07, Two High Ridge Drive, New Home Construction.
Okay, I was told that they were going to be here. It should be Fred D'Amico and Phil Pedros.
I don't see anybody like that. Oh, here's Phil, there's Phil.
Okay, let's see, Phil, I see you, let's see if I can unmute you. Or maybe you can unmute.
You can unmute now?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
And I will share my screen, this is for Two High Ridge. So, high ridge plants, oh, updated plan set. So I did receive an updated plan set today, and this is what is on. Sorry, let me just get this rotated correctly here. Okay. These were submitted today along with some updated drainage calculations. So, Phil, I'm not sure, is Fred here to present, or are you presenting?
He was supposed to be here. I spoke to him a little while ago, he said he was gonna be on. He's probably late as usual.
This proposal, if you just want to give a quick overview of what this is for, this is the new construction, new home construction?
It is, so what it is, this was an approved subdivision back in the 80s, and the owners own the lot since the 80s, and I'm gonna be constructing a single-family home for him there. And there's some wetlands that runs in the back, so it was approved back then, we're just trying to get it re-approved, I guess, so that we can move forward.
Okay, sorry about that, I had the wrong screen shared.
Okay.
Okay. So the commission, I think you've got some new plans set, and I don't know if anybody had reviewed it and had seen what was going on, and if anybody has any remarks regarding it.
All the commissioners, does anybody have any questions at this time? We still have more opportunity for questions later on.
No questions at this time.
I did, actually not questions, I did not get a chance to review it, it didn't come to our mailboxes until about 3:30 this afternoon, which is about five days later than it's expected, so we didn't have the time to review it, and I can't see it on an eight-by-eleven sheet of paper. So, due to the lateness of it and our regulations, we're gonna need to hold this hearing open anyway until the next time. But we will have questions, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stewart on this development proposal?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
This, I just got on, I'm sorry, I was at another meeting, I just got out. Yeah, just so you know, the only changes were, I addressed some items, there was like five or-
Name it for the record, please.
Oh, sorry, it's Fred D'Amico, the project engineer. And the only items that were changed were, there was like five or six revisions, small revisions, just to address some comments that the town engineer had, and I probably, maybe I was better off not addressing them, so that you didn't get a late, you know, revised map. So if you don't even look at the revised map, just look at the map you do have, the items are so small, it's basically just adding some inverts and a couple things like that. But basically, the whole plan, none of the plans was really changed. So if you look at the plan that you got five days ago, or the 10 copies, the large copies, they're essentially the same plan.
Okay, so if the commission wants, I do have the town engineer's comments. You can go through them if you want. His first comment, these were by Scott Schatzlein, he was reviewing the revised plans of May 7th. And the first item was stormwater control. It says, "The existing town drainage system from the cul-de-sac should be labeled with pipe-sized materials, inverts, etc. A reference to the existing drainage easement should be provided." Also said easement should extend to show the full limits on the easterly end. Item number three had notes about the leaching gallery details. They should be revised with the following. "To eliminate redundant details, labeling should indicate 'gallery', in lieu of 'gally'. The proposed invert datum in the detail for the leaching gallery should match the plan. Invert detail is 98.5, but the grades are in the 400s." Item D, "The manufacturer model, name, and number, and more details of the actual unit dimension, wall thickness, inside-outside dimensions, perforations, should be included." Item number four, "The plan should show the leaching gallery overflow pipes and discharge points." "Plan should show how the multi-section of the roof will be routed to the galleries, including inverts." Item number six, "The detail of the outlet control structure should be revised to plunge pool or riprap splash pad, and the plan should show where it's located." Item number seven is "The size and calculations for the gallery system should be provided." Number eight was "Labeling inverts and detail of the catch basin in the driveway should be provided." Also said basin should be moved further down the driveway to catch more of the impervious runoff and be relocated to fall along the edge of the driveway. Note that the driveway should include a cross slope to assure that runoff gets into the catch basin. Item number nine, "Retention should be provided for the easterly portion of the driveway and turnaround, noting that water quality control is important for this area since it's where car washing will most likely take place." Number 10, "Location of the water main and water service along with other utilities should be shown." Number 11, "Grading should be revised off the northwest end of the driveway in order to preclude lawn runoff from entering the catch basin that drains into the retention system." Item B, "As far as the MS4 general stormwater discharge permits, the bond estimate needs to be provided, which we received today." That fence should be provided along the south property line, and it should be shown and labeled on the maps.
Donna, could I interrupt one minute?
Absolutely.
Those items were actually addressed, and those items are all addressed on the revised plans that you received last week. He then reviewed them again, and I got the reissued comment sheet yesterday.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Most of those items were crossed out, yeah, almost all those items were crossed out, and then there's only, now there's only like, there were only five items that were addressed, and they were very minor, because that whole list was addressed. You should have another comment sheet that's dated, I believe yesterday or the day before, and that's what I addressed. I figured I might as well address that at the same time and get rid of that also.
Okay, I apologize, I thought I I thought I had that one in my file, but you're right, he did do one yesterday, and that's where I think the commission, actually, I emailed that to you, didn't I?
If you see, if you look at that, if you look at that list, most of the items that he, his comments, he agrees, they were addressed and they were changed, and he was happy with them, there's only a couple minor things. Like I left two details of the gallery on both pages, so I took one off today. There was one number that was just written down wrong, so I changed that. There's a couple items that he wanted me to add, the top and the bottom of the galleys, which I did, which really wasn't really necessary, I thought, because if you have one elevation, all you do is add two feet to get to the top of the galley, but that's what he wanted, but that's the kind of comment, that's what I'm saying, they're kind of minor comments, but I did figure I addressed them, so at least you'd see that I did address them, every comment.
Okay. Do you, you don't, yes, go ahead.
Okay, I do have kind of a general question, let us get centered here about what is gonna happen. And I'm looking at this picture right here, and it's, the actual proposed dwelling outline is not clear to me. Because of the way it kind of extends, so maybe someone on the applicant's team could point out clearly where the dwelling is. I noticed the wetlands, I mean, it backs right up to the wetlands, so help us understand where the dwelling is, it appears to be at the high point of the property, dropping off fairly sharply on either side. So could someone paint us a simple layman's picture of where that house will be positioned and how the drain fields and septic go with that?
Yeah, the house, the proposed dwelling is, you're right, it is on the high point of the property. The property unfortunately drops sharply to the road, to the front, and also to the back, to the wetlands. The only place, because of the septic conditions, we had to excavate or did septic tests to the side, so we were able to keep the septic system as far away from the wetlands as possible, and we pushed the dwelling to, kind of to one side, but we couldn't go any closer. We were not that much farther back than the 50-foot setback from the road, and that basically left us with the proposed dwelling is definitely within the 100-foot regulated area. So we are in the wetland setback, for sure. And then also on the left side, on the, I think, what I would say, the left side of the property, or on the down, on the bottom of the page, there's also a town drainage easement, which carries all the road runoff to the back, and there's an existing headwall there that empties, basically runs into the the small brook there that's in the wetlands. So we had to keep, at the same time, we had to keep away from that with both the septic system and the dwelling. So we're kind of like limited where we could go, and that's the reason why when we did the stormwater management proposals, we did one to the front and one to the back. So the detention galleries in the front catch half the roof water and 90% of the driveway, and the detention galleys in the back only catch maybe half the roof water, and that's it. If you looked at the drainage couch, you see that basically, that's how they're both designed. The drainage galleries are both, pretty largely oversized. To make it simple, I took the worst case from one side and just made both the drainage detention galleries the same in the front and the back, so the one in the back is probably twice as big as what it has to be. But that's basically what it is, and if you can't see the lot, the actual outline of the house, I don't know if there's a way, Phil, if you have, if it's on your computer, or somehow somebody could point out the tracing of the house, I don't know if that's easy to show. Unfortunately, I'm on my phone, so I can't see what you actually are looking at.
Well, there's a dotted line right through underneath where it says dwelling.
Proposed dwelling, yeah.
Proposed dwelling, but so is the outline of the house, the solid line all the way around? Or does that dotted line have meaning?
The outline of the house is a solid line.
Okay.
Let me look at the plan, I have a copy of the plan, let me see what the dotted line is.
Roughly how big is it?
I think the dotted line might be, the dotted line might be the roof line, the ridge of the roof.
Okay.
Is that what that was?
That would seem to make sense, okay, that helps.
Yeah, sorry, the dotted line in the middle of the house, that's actually denotes the ridge, so that the portion on one side of the line, the dotted line, it's like an L shape. The right-hand side goes to the back galleries, and the front, the left side goes to the front.
That helps quite a bit, quite a bit. Looks like you had to pack a lot of drainage and retention into a very small area.
Yes, luckily, luckily the conditions, the septic conditions, that when we did deep tests all over, they actually showed fairly good drainage, which we were lucky on that, because it did appear that there was ledge, but when we dug down, all the deep tests showed, didn't show any ledge near the surface. So we're able, that's why we were able to get the galleries in the front and the back.
Okay, and does that view of the proposed dwelling, does that include any decking or back patio area that might extend up to that wetland marker?
That includes everything, there is no proposed deck in the back or patio.
Okay, good, that answers my question, so Commissioner Spence, back to you.
Thank you.
There actually, excuse me, there actually is a small deck. It's in that indentation in the back, yeah, right there. So it, but it doesn't protrude out further than the house. Right there, that's the furthest it protrudes out.
Okay, good, thanks.
Oh, there is a small deck in that little indentation?
There is, yeah.
Okay.
One other thing I just wanted to point out, I'm sorry, the septic was approved by the Health Department on this last week.
Donna, did you get any paperwork indicating that?
I did, yes, we just got that, yep.
May I just interrupt for a moment, Keith, what time did you arrive?
I have it at 7:23.
I'm about, I think about three more minutes.
Okay.
And I'll get in.
Okay, all right. Jim, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good at this point.
Clark?
I'm good at this point.
Okay, I have a couple. Let me see, some of these might have been addressed already by your by your interactions. So if I duplicate, please forgive me, but I really can't see the copies that I have, it's only distinct. You explained why there's two roof drains, one to the front and one to the back, that makes sense. Do you have a recent soil report? That's required by our regulations.
Okay, we did not, we did not get the, we used the wetland slagging from the original subdivision, and that's right, and we, no one could find the, unfortunately, the original soils report, so we did not get it redone, if that's necessary, we can get a soil scientist out there.
That would be great, and I also would like to know a little bit of an assessment, like what kind of wetland is it? Is it, it appears to be a tributary to a river, not just a wetland, it does appear to be a stream. Can you confirm one way or the other?
Yes, it is, there's a little, there's a little stream that goes from one side of the property to the other. As a matter of fact, just, and I know, it's right across the brook, there was another plan that was approved, and the house was just constructed probably within the last six months. So I would imagine our report would be similar to that one, so if you did want to check into that, you would see that the type of soils, I'm sure, are similar. But we, again, like, if necessary, we will get a soil scientist out there to redraw the actual soil.
Could you speak up a little bit or move closer to your microphone, please? I'm having trouble hearing, I don't know if anybody else is.
Okay, sorry, yeah, no, there was, just for your information, there was a lot that was approved within the last year across the brook, probably not directly behind, but one lot, like on the corner of our property. And that was just approved, and the house was just constructed, I think they just got their CO within the last couple months. It's basically on a north, on a northerly corner of our property.
That was Moose Hill Road?
Yeah, that was on, the address is actually Moose Hill Road.
That's the one where they're having an issue?
You'll be able to look at, you know, that'll actually kind of show you what kind of soils there are there, because it's similar, it's the same brook that runs from that property down from north to south.
Okay, but we still need, each application has to stand on its own, so we would need our report to find it.
I was telling you that for your, you know, just one information.
Thank you very much. Now, I know you said you've got lots of space restraint, but is there a way to orient the house a little bit differently so that you didn't have to clear 90% of the upwind review area? It's a tributary to a river, I don't know what river, but it's really danger, not dangerous, but I mean, it's not a good idea to clear so much of the upwind review area right next to a water source. So I was wondering, could you, could anything be rearranged? Could you reorient the house a little bit so that you pull it away from the wetlands a little bit, or just turn it so that it's not quite on the same axis that it is right now? It's just a question.
We actually, we did, when I did, I did the layout, I did like two or three layouts, and I did have it turned like on a sharper angle, but the problem is the 50-foot setback, if you, the lighter dash line is the 50-foot setback, we can't go any closer than that, so on the southerly, the front of the house, on the southerly portion, is basically right up against the 50-foot setback, and I tried turning it to like rotate it about that point, and what happened is it got too close to the septic system, like, that's, this is the only location, the only way I could fit it so the septic was the minimum 25 feet away. And I even had to cut the, I had to break up the septic system and use actually a a special system that is a little more expensive than normal, unfortunately, but that's the only system that would actually fit in that small area and still meet the state health code.
Okay, thank you, you did describe that well. Okay, then the other big one, or one that stuck out to me, was that you have all your plantings on the outside of the limit of disturbance, and the split rail fence should be, as it is, I think that's a split rail fence, is it not?
Yes, it is.
Okay, your plantings should all be inside of that.
I could easily, I could move those, I have no problem with that.
Okay.
If you want them on the other side, in other words, if you want all them on the westerly side of the split rail fence, we could easily move them over to that side. I just tried to make a barrier with them, so whether they're on one side or the other, I don't think it matters.
Okay, it doesn't, from an aesthetic point of view, but from a upwind review area, it does. We want as much of that area to remain undisturbed, and since you come within 10 feet of the wetlands here and there, it's a good, it's a good idea to keep them on the upwind side. And there's no on the legend, the wetland markers are not listed?
Oh, they're on page, they're on page two, there should be a page two. This is page one, on page two, there's a detail of the wetland markers.
Oh, yeah, but they're not part of the legend, I just would like to see you add them to the legend, so people know what that big dot is.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
All right, with that big circle dot, yeah, the only reason I didn't is because I have right next to them. All right, with that big circle dot, yeah, I, the only reason I didn't is because I have right next to him says wetlands marker, but I, I could add that to the legend also.
You happen, it is kind of a busy plan, so there's a lot going on.
Definitely is. I'm trying to test you.
Okay.
But yeah, no, I'll, I have no problem adding that to the legend.
That would be wonderful, thank you. And I think that's it that I have. So what we would need from you for next, oh, Keith, did you have any questions?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
What we, so we would need from you for the next time would be a soil scientist report, a notation that you move the plantings to the westerly side of the split rail fence, so the LOD will actually be the limit, and you're going to add the markers to the legend. Did I get everything?
I am seeing on the second page, the house says existing dwelling?
Uh, yeah, that, I probably accidentally left that without changing that, but yes, it is, it's a proposed dwelling.
Okay, that should be changed.
Yep, yep. And, and actually, I believe it was changed, probably was changed on the, on the, the new, the PDF that I sent. Because I think I noticed that.
This is the map you sent me today.
Okay, then, then I somehow missed something else again then. All right. I, I'll definitely change that.
Okay, so the soil reports for the, before the next meeting?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. What is, what is the second, yes, yeah, actually, we can do that, but I mean, what is the second page? It shows the dwelling in a different place. Is it supposed to be all alternate?
The second, the second sheet should have, it should be basically a copy of the first sheet, but it's a diff, uh...
Not the one I got.
I'll double, I'll double check that to make sure.
It's got the system on the other side, it's got, the house is much more furtherly north, northerly.
Oh, yeah.
I think, yeah, I think maybe, maybe that, that's shown the old layout, trying to put it in a different way, so yeah. That one, I'll dou, I'll, let me double check that and make sure that's probably was one of the ways that we tried to fit in, but we couldn't fit the septic system in.
That's exactly what it was. You can see the, you can see the septic's on the other side of the house. That was the, one of the other two ways that you did, Fred.
Yes, and then what happened was we found out that septic system ended up being closer to the brook, which I, I wanted to keep the septic system itself, which is the biggest pollutant of all things. I wanted to keep that at least 50 feet away from the brook. And, and I think that way was, it was a lot closer. So that's why we kind of scrapped that idea, and I forgot to change that. Basically, the second sheet is mainly just for details, and I accidentally left that, that proposal was left on that plan.
Okay, so we can expect that from you for next time then, right?
Yes.
Okay. Would any commissioners have any further questions? Okay, there are none. We'll continue this hearing until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to take over from here, you're welcome to do so.
Sounds good. Okay. I W C dash 2021 dash 08, 100 Crossville Road. Removal invasive plants and revegetate with non-invasive plants, cleaning a pipe and construction of rock dam. Who's presenting on that?
Mr. Peron is here.
That would be me, Gary Peron. Hello?
Uh, hello?
Yep, we hear you.
Can you hear me?
I think your video is off.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with the conn. Um, yeah, so basically, the pipe for my, my pond in my front yard, it was hit by some trees that fell this past winter, and it loosened the pipe, and so the pond has been draining out very slowly. Basically, just want to repair that pipe. I have a landscape contractor that's going to look at it. The only reason for the dam is to dry out the area, so he could see what he's working with. And then the thought was to, to leave it, just, just stone or a couple of large stones to purify the water and keep the pipe clean before it goes into the standpipe. It's not a necessity, but it is needed to at least dry out the area so we can work on it.
This is, uh, this is the one we saw last year, right, with some pictures?
I believe so. This is the one Denise had worked with him on?
Denise had some photographs earlier.
Yes, Denise without, yep.
I don't know that I have any of the photos on here.
Denise was out about a month ago and took some photos.
I don't have the photos on right now.
So just describe to us a little bit about what you're going to, how and what you're going to do to remove vegetation and what you're going to replace it with.
Okay, so the vegetation would either be, you know, cut out or pulled out, no chemicals. We're going to replace it with low plants, hopefully something on the site that's no higher than three to four feet high. We just want to add some color along the channel that feeds the, feeds the pond on either, either side of the channel, and then a couple here and there around the circumference of the pond. We want to add a total of 20 yards of fill soil and 10 yards of topsoil around the perimeter of the wetland area, because it's very steep, and we want to make it a little, a, a good planting area and, and not as steep, because it looks like a sunken in hole in my front yard. And we would, you know, we would, we would taper that down to zero, zero inches as it reaches the wetland area. It's, it's basically a small project, and again, the main purpose is to restore the pond to what it was.
And the, the water that comes into the pond, is that intermittent with the rain, rain, or is it constant flow?
It's constant, but it's very slow, you know, with rain, it's heavier. It comes from the backwoods of the back of my yard, and then comes around the side of the house. For a good amount of the way, it's underground, and then as it approaches the pond, it opens up and it's visible.
Okay. Uh, any other commissioners have any questions for Sir Peron?
Yeah, Commissioner Hall?
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I've driven by and looked at the site as it, as it looks now, and it looks like the, the plan that the applicant has laid out here is very reasonable. It's not that big an area, it's very well-defined right now. I'd say this looks to me like a, a cleanup fix-up that we shouldn't have any problem approving.
Okay, I appreciate that. Would there be a problem with leaving a stone in front of the pipe to serve as a dam as a flow over to the pipe? Or would it be some, would that be something you could put in temporary to dry it out, fix it, and do you want us to remove it?
I'd leave that to Commissioner Ramon to comment.
Um, I'm not 100% sure exactly what you mean by that, but you're saying the dam you want to put there for what purpose, again?
It would serve to, you know, right now, to dry out the area around the pipe so we could fix it properly. Then we thought of leaving it there so that when the water hit, it would overflow the rocks, sort of clean the water, it would keep the pipe clean, the pipe tended to get clogged all the time with debris, algae, and stuff like that.
Is that, was that, I'm sorry, I, I... Wasn't that pipe a 90-degree elbow that was sticking up? If I remember from the picture?
Yes, yep.
And that's since come off, or is it still there?
It, it's still there, it's very loose, it's been upheaved a little when the tree hit it. So the water seeped all around and under it.
I think the intention of that was to actually hold some water in there, so you actually had, now you're not looking to have, uh, to hold back some water and create like a, a little body of water? Which way are you looking to go?
That, we want to keep the body of water, keep the pond, we just thought that the, the stone there would, you know, keep that pipe unclogged and stuff, but we don't have to have it, it was just a thought.
I mean, it's, I, I don't, me personally don't think it, it makes that much of a difference, but when it comes to, you know, doing the work, you're going to take that 90 off, and you're not going to hold back any water so that area will, you know, flow through. You wouldn't have to dam anything up, and my, my next suggestion to the commission is that maybe this should be an agent approval if anybody else thinks that way.
Sounds good to me.
I would go with that also.
Um, can I intervene here?
Sure.
Denise had actually brought this to you, and you guys had requested that he do the application, which is what he is doing, because you just wanted to make sure about the stone dam and everything, so this is an application that you can approve or deny, but to refer it back to an agent approval probably would not be the proper thing.
Okay, I understand, I understand. Okay. So, uh, okay, so then... Do we have any other questions or concerns about this application? Lois, go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm confused. Is, is your stone dam that you're proposing only as large as the pictorial view, or is it going to be longer than that? Because it's a significant amount of water going in there, it's going to go right around those rocks. Unless it's a dam that goes wide enough to hold it back, so I'm confused.
Yeah, you're, you're right, it would have to be pretty wide, so like I said, we're not set on it. The main purpose of the stone I put it in there, we thought just to dry out the area till we know we repaired the pipe and remove it. So like I said, it's, it's not a heel breaker that, that we have to have that, because that's the other thought, that it's probably going to, you're right, it would have to go all the way across quite a distance, so...
I don't have a problem with it being there, but I don't even see how it's going to dry out the area, because with any amount of water, it's going to go right around the rocks. If you're going to use it to dry up a section, you've got to hold it back a lot, you know, you need something more substantial than just a six-foot or however big section of wall that is. So we wanted to make one across to make it, otherwise it's not going to be a pond any longer. You're talking about taking the pipe out or reinstalling it properly?
It looks like right now, just reinstalling it properly. And like I said, until we get in there and then the contractor gets in there and looks at it in detail, you know, we'll know, but it looks like just reinstalling it properly.
Okay.
I don't see, I don't see any damage to the pipe or any cracks or anything like that. It just looks very loose right now, like it was upheaved a little bit when the tree hit it.
Okay, so I did, I didn't see this before, it was, I haven't actually seen it since the pictures, but was the top of the pipe exposed by a certain amount so that water would be retained, and only when it went over a certain point, then it would go down the pipe?
Yes, the pipe, the, the, the top of the pipe was exposed a little bit, yes.
Okay, so that's what created the pond itself? That's what did the...
Correct.
Okay. So it brings into question, do you even need the dam? Although it would help, like you said, it would help with debris. The next question I have is, what is the distance that you're planning to fill from the pond edge outward?
Uh, I would approximate that to be maybe four to six feet. So it'd be from the pond edge towards my house. It's kind of concave, it goes, you have the front yard, and then it dips down to the pond, and it's, it's kind of concave. And we just kind of wanted to smooth that out, fill that out all the way around without going into the wetland.
Okay, then you'll need some kind of erosion and sedimentation control. You're going right down to the edge of the wetlands, accidents happen, and it would probably be who knew to keep the, whatever you're putting in, if you happen to have a flash flood or something, and all of a sudden, all your, all your dirt is in the pond. So you will need some kind of erosion and sedimentation control. I, I personally do not care for silk fence, because it's got to be dug in, but if you could do something that sits on top, like a silk sock, or... I also don't like hay bales, because they create a great deal of speed, and so something that wood chip berm, something that can, actually, wood chip berm might be a good one, because then when you're done, you can spread it out and use it as mulch.
Yeah, I, I like that myself. Okay.
So that was one...
The, the good choices would be silk sock or wood chip berm. Yep.
Something significant enough to hold back whatever you're going to put down there if it rains heavily. And, okay, then... What kind of wetland-approved plants were you, did you have in mind?
We haven't picked them, but I've been on your site, and like I said, the only thing I know is the height. I don't want them very big, anything three to four feet high, nothing higher than that.
Okay.
So that's, I want to go through with the contractor, and I, I would like something with some color to beautify it, make it look nice, but nothing large.
All right, is your contractor familiar with native plantings?
Famili, I'm sorry, familiar with what?
Native plantings. We just highly discourage anything that is not a native plant.
Um, I will ask him, I'm sure he is.
Okay. Do you know who that, who it is, like what's the landscaper?
Uh, Joe D'Angelo?
All right.
I believe.
He conforms with the plant, the approved plants on the wetlands website, that should be fine.
Right.
You said there was a significant slope between where you want to fill and the edge, correct?
Correct, yeah, you, as you walk out my front yard, it's flat, it's flat, and then it's, it's almost concave, and it's, it goes straight down to the pond, the pond area. So that's something I want to kind of, you know, grade a little bit so that it's not as sharp of a decline.
Okay. All right. Normally, we ask for a, a planting plan of sorts, so that when, when you're finished, I don't know, we don't need to smoke, but usually when we're, when you're finished, we have an agent go and just kind of determine that what you said you were going to do, which we actually did. And so I don't know how the rest of the commission wants to deal with this, or if they even want to. Or would you give it up to our agent for that?
Uh, my thought is, this is a voluntary, you know, homeowner has a desire to, to put wetlands plants in his front yard, so where are we going to hold them to?
Okay.
He's doing an improvement, he's, he wants to improve it, it's not like it's a violation or...
No problem with that. My only question...
The plants should be the right plants. Okay, wrong, I agree, they should be the, the right plants for the environment, but I don't know how you want to, you know, go forward with that. I think it's up to his own, you know, discretion as to what he wants to put in, how many, as long as it's the bill.
I'm good with that. I would just like to caution you to monitor it very carefully, because the invasives are rampant, especially when you bring in outside machinery. There's Japanese knotweed, and there is Japanese silk grass, and there's all kinds of things that you can do. If they, if you're whole, you've got a nightmare. So...
Okay.
You put your plantings in, monitor them carefully for a couple of years, because it, these things don't show up as a real problem right away, but they can become real when they do. And that's, that's the rest of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's good to know. Thank you for that. Yep.
Hey, Commissioner Spence, anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I just have one comment there. I think that perhaps when the applicant has decided on which plants to use, decided on which plants to use, he might review that with the wetlands agent just for a final check. I would leave it to them to make the right decision on that.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yep, that's, that's fair enough.
Now, now this is, what, what was this? A detention pond?
I'm, I'm sorry, what kind of pond?
Is it a detention pond for the house?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what, what you're asking.
Is it a, is it a stormwater? What was the, is this a natural pond or is it a stormwater pond? Was it built when the house was built?
It, you know, was here when I moved here 32 years ago. Uh, it, it appears to be a natural pond. Like I said, the water comes from my backwoods. Um, don't know for sure. But it's been here, everything has been here since I moved here and I never had a problem with.
And, and it's really, it's, it's really round like that?
I mean, I, I drew it a li- a little rounder, a little more perfect, but it is, but, um, it has been here since I moved here.
And it's only, it's only about 20, 25 feet across?
Yeah, I would approximate that at, at that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so, um, can we, uh, do we have to move this to deliberations? Or, yes, right? So I'd like to make a motion to move this application to deliberation.
I'm ready.
Motion from Commissioner Spence, second.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Hall, all right, we lost your video. Uh, second by Commissioner Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion moves, uh, both unanimously, move to deliberations. Uh, thank you for your application.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to public hearings. IWC 2021 dash zero four five Victoria Drive. Proposed athletic field building and parking.
So I received correspondence today um, from Chris Palowski from Solely Engineering. And he was asking on behalf of the applicant that they formally request postponement of the public hearing scheduled for tonight. Um, to the next scheduled inland wetland meeting. And I also received a notice of, uh, granting of an extension time to the next meeting um, on June 23rd. Cause we're past 35 days now, so we're into our 65 day extension time.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so postpone this or move it to the next meeting. Hour two enforcement. N O B discussion, none, mediation submissions, I W R 2021 dash zero two, one eighteen Elm Street, approved, clear. Beyond posted upland review area. Remediation of I W V dash 2020 dash 12. Noah, do you want, oh, there you go.
Okay, so the gentleman said he was going to be on tonight. Let me see.
Here.
I honestly don't know. Hold on.
Didn't he call, didn't he call in last time? Or did he have video? I don't remember.
Um, no, he wasn't here and you had requested him to be here for this meeting and I spoke with him today. And, uh, he said that he would attend. And it was, uh, Mr. Mike Daniels.
All right.
And I don't see anybody trying to talk.
All right, well, we could, we could always come back to it, right? If, uh, if he shows up.
That's fine.
I'll, uh, put a reminder out after the next one. I W C dash 2021 dash O six R 64 Cambridge remediation to entail earthwork, drainage and upland enhancement to restore previous watershed drainage patterns to eastern wetland system.
Oh, okay, 64 Cambridge. So somebody, Chris is here. I see, I see his name, but I don't see his.
Good evening, members of the commission. Are we on?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Um, so good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Um, uh, so looking to continue the discussion regarding, uh, the remediation and restoration application for 64 Cambridge and for Independence Drive in Monroe. Um, I think at the last meeting, we discussed a, a number of things, but obviously this project has an intervenor. Um, so I think what was discussed was that at this hearing, they would, uh, you know, we, we provided um, response to, uh, staff comments, um, which was delivered last Wednesday. Those should be in your files. And I think the intervenor mentioned that they would be providing their comprehensive presentation, uh, tonight's meeting. Um, we were hoping that they could, uh, run through their presentation for, for the commission and for us. And then we'd be able to provide a response to them, um, uh, subsequent to their presentation.
Uh, it sounds good to me. So I'll, uh, to, um, um, Joel Green to, uh, start his presentation.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, staff. My name is Joel Green. I practice law bridge work with the offices of Green and Gross and for the record, I appear before you this evening on behalf of Peter Metropolis. Uh, as a trustee who, as you know, by now is the owner of the abiding property that on Timothy Hill Road. So we filed a petition to intervene in this proceeding and I had actually, uh, at the request of my client, I had written a rather long letter. Uh, actually not that long, but I had laid out several bullet points and it was a letter to the chair. And I, uh, my client wanted me to really sort of keep this short and sweet as I know you do. And so I agreed to put this in all in letter form and I will tell you that I somewhat struggled procedurally with this matter. But let me just go through, uh, the contents of my letter. I may end up submitting it, but I will sort of get to the punchline after I present this. And, uh, basically I indicated first of all, um, that my client is very interested in seeing a remediation plan go forward and to seeing this property restored. And obviously, as I've expressed many times over the past year, uh, and other proceedings before the commission. My client is here because he's deeply concerned about the impacts of the activities that have occurred on this site. So what we had agreed to do is generally to support this application with, uh, terms and conditions and some considerations that we'd asked the commission to consider. And I will provide this to you in writing, but basically the summary goes like this. The first thing we wanted to ask you to do and, uh, the minutes should note, um, we'd like the commission to formally incorporate into the record in this proceeding. The record of the proceedings on the wetland permit that the applicant had previously filed and that's I W C 2020 dash O three, uh, initial R. So the first thing is, I know that the commission, uh, several of the commissioners have made, uh, have referred to that record many times. So I think it would be important that you formally incorporate that record into the record of this proceeding. So that's item one. Item two, I am struck by the fact that at the beginning of, uh, my involvement with this matter, I heard several of the commission members suggest that where a violation exists, the violation should really be remedied or remediated before any sort of development activities or any development, uh, any activities that promote development are considered. So, uh, and I note that in this year, I've watched this commission treat certain parties with violations in that manner and that the violations had to be addressed. So my second point is the violation must be addressed, uh, really before development occurs. The third point I wanted to make is, uh, that these, this commission should impose a condition that the applicant, uh, prior to commencing any work on the subject premises, that this applicant obtain all required permits from all applicable agencies, including most notably, uh, P and Z and also, uh, uh, DEEP, Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So as a specific condition, uh, this commission should require that all applicable, uh, permits uh, be obtained and we may disagree with the applicant on the permits that are required. But so the third thing that we're suggesting is to get all required permits. We would suggest, um, an urge for the commission to require that the applicant have some sort of a pre-application meeting with DEEP. Uh, and once again, we'd ask the commission to impose that condition. The fourth item that we'd like, um, the, uh, commission to consider is to decline any proposal to alter the lot lines or to isolate portions of this site which have been particularly impacted by the activities that I would say are illegal activities that occurred in the overexclamation of the site. I think that, uh, the commission should really, should treat this site as one, as an entire site. As the site has been treated by the applicant and its predecessor. Uh, in terms of the activities that have occurred there, uh, one feature and one issue that my client and I've discussed and frankly, I've discussed with others is this notion that potentially one portion of the property could be, uh, remediated or one portion of the property. I guess the concept is that the entire site, the entirety of 64 and four must move in lockstep in terms of remediation and restoration. And you don't want a situation where, for example, the title holder of one property completes the work that it is bound to do and the title holder of the other property does not complete its work. And, uh, either abandons the work or that doesn't get done. And I think a, a real incentive to getting all the work done is to require it to be done as one. Uh, like our consultants and my client and I are skeptical about the ability of, of the applicant to ultimately, um, perform a lot line revision because there are some other issues involved in that. But we'll leave that aside. I don't want to spend any more time on that. The next issue is the thing that brought us here tonight was illegal filling, illegal grading and, uh, illegal receipt and processing of materials in my view. And, uh, please leave for one moment. By way of explanation, my family is dog sitting for someone who, and we have a new dog in our home for the first time tonight. And, uh, it's already been an adventure. So that's that. I apologize. So what I was saying is, the thing that brought us to this place was, uh, obviously the export of material. We have raised issues in the, uh, permit application regarding the import of materials. Uh, one thing that has been uniform throughout is that the applicant has represented that it has had a vigorous and robust um, protocol for receiving materials on the site. And I think that, and it, that it has documentation of all of the materials that have been brought to the site. So I would urge this commission to require that the commission have access to, uh, those documents so that at any time, this commission has the ability to see what was brought to the site. And, um, obviously, um, to understand where it came from. We have stated before this commission that, uh, there are issues with, um, the sites from which materials were brought to this site. We are aware of materials that were furnished to the plan and zoning commission that, um, there are, for example, brownfield sites from which materials were brought to this site. Um, it is our position and we believe that the deep regulations require that uh, material from brownfield sites must be brought to a facility. Not a facility. And I would also state for the record.
Hold on, Donna, can you mute? All right, sorry, done.
I would also state that we have issued, uh, there were a limited number of intake documents provided to P and Z. We have, um, we have, uh, sent FOI requests to the municipalities from which those materials emanated. In no instance was 64 Cambridge Drive or for Independence Drive identified as a disposal site for demolition material from various projects. In several instances, there were other facilities that had been identified as demolition site, the demolition to receive the demolition materials. I apologize. But in no instance was 64 Cambridge identified and yet we're aware from documents provided by the applicant that those materials were brought to this site. So once again, this commission should require that the applicant allow this commission access or provide copies to all of its material intake forms so that this commission has a record for anything that may occur in the future as to what was brought to this site. The applicant has represented that it has careful records. So I'm just going to put that out there. I urge the commission to consider that request. Next.
Well, Mr. Green, what, what point are we on now? Is that just five? Are we on to six?
We're on to six now.
Thank you.
Six is, um, this commission has allowed, uh, the applicant to engage in efforts to rehydrate.
Uh, Mr. Green, you just, you just went robotic on us for a second. Can you restate? Mr. Green, you're, you, we don't hear you at all.
Yes, sorry, it's that. One moment. I'm just going to need a moment, just a moment. Okay, I'm joining you by phone. I hope you can hear me.
You can hear me now.
Okay, I apologize. Uh, so number six.
Turn off your microphone at home, uh,
So.
Shut your microphone on your computer.
How's that?
That's good.
Okay, sorry for the technical challenges tonight. So, uh, number six is that apparently the wetlands are about to be uh, either are, I'm not sure where it stands. As I understood it, there were wells being drilled and I'm not sure where the rehydration of the wetlands project is right now in terms of, uh, hydrating the wetlands, but I think that this
But I think that this commission, the, my client would recommend that there be quarterly reporting of the results of the efforts by the applicant to rehydrate the onsite wetlands. And this commission should really make it a point to stay on top of that quarterly reporting because it's important and I know this was something of concern to many of the commissioners. The next item is that this commission, this would be number seven. This commission should require a dust mitigation plan with respect to all activities going forward, which should be monitored on a routine basis to ensure that the dust generated from handling hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of material will not impair or affect the onsite wetlands, which the applicant is engaging in efforts to restore. Number eight is, as suggested by certain of the commissioners and I think most notably Commissioner Spence and Hall, I reviewed the minutes of the meetings from the permit from, I think, last August. And I think there was a discussion of providing a series of monitoring wells on the site in order to monitor the quality of the groundwater. And I think that that, we would, I'm sorry, the intervenor would suggest that there be groundwater monitoring and reporting on a quarterly basis as well to this commission so that, and I would urge the commission to, I think Mr. Glass may be able to, after I'm done, maybe provide some insight on the, or you know, whoever, I'm sure that the applicant can also provide information on the nature and extent of those monitoring wells and where they should be located. Number eight, I'm sorry.
I think you're in number nine.
Number nine is, I wanted to just address the petition to intervene that we filed and I'm just briefly going to say this. I think that there was a, I think that there was a gross, perhaps misconception as to the law on petitions to intervene. I think that in ruling on the last intervention, I think there was just a discussion as to whether there was pollution or not. And I will, with my letter, provide the commission with a copy of twenty-two A nineteen, which allows interventions. And what it really says is that in any administrative proceeding such as this, any person may intervene as a party by filing a verified pleading asserting that the proceeding involves conduct, and this is important, which ha, which has, which has, so it refers to in the past tense, or which is reasonably likely to have the effect. And it says unreasonably polluting, but then it goes on and to says impairing or destroying the public trust in the air, water, or other natural resources. I would say it's a hop, skip, and a jump here where there's been several hundred thousand cubic yards of over excavation on this site that natural resources have been impacted. And really what this allows is a party such as Mr. Metropolis to participate in this proceeding. And it's not a tremendous burden and we have alleged that there have been filling, grading, and excavation activities in our petition. So I think maybe there was some misconception as to the law and the need to prove, for example, pollution, but I will provide you with the statute. And once again, it's not, it's not a great leap to become an intervenor and that is by design to protect the air, water, and natural resources. It's an easy burden. And once again, it refers to the past tense and obviously there have been activities on this site which have destroyed air, water, or natural resources being obviously all of the underground structure here. And we're aware that there were wetlands that were impacted by that work. So I wanted to put that, I will provide this letter to the commission, but there's a more pressing matter that I really need to address. And what I, what I said earlier is I struggled with this letter because I've struggled procedurally with where we are in this proceeding. And what's happened is there's a violation on this site and you, your regulations have sections dealing with violations. And I, I note that this came before this commission as sort of a, that you have a form for restoration or remediation that's used. But the fact of the matter is that your section on violations does not, does not authorize your, this commission to do anything that is being requested here. And really, any activity that involves filling, grading, or any such thing, or all of the activities that are being presented here are in the context of the requirements of a wetland permit. So really, you, in dealing with the violation, you can receive information from this applicant and that guides you in how to address sort of the tools that you have to deal with violations such as issuing a cease and desist, deciding whether you're going to exact a civil penalty and that sort of thing. But your regulations are very clear as to what regulated activities are. And, and any activity, and I mean, I'm quoting your regulations. And it specifically defines regulated activities as any operation within or use of a wetland or water course involving removal or deposition of material or any obstruction, construction, alteration, modification, pollution of wetlands. But then it also refers to, regulated activity includes, in addition, is not limited to clearing, grubbing, filling, grading, regrading, paving, depositing or removing of material or discharging of stormwater on the land within established upland review areas as well. So, so in, and, so I completed this letter yesterday and I had a colleague of mine do quite a bit of research on this. And there are exceptions to wetland permits and you're aware of some of them. Some of them are farming, for example, draining of wetlands for farming purposes. Amongst those exemptions is not violations and not remedial work or restoration work. So really, this proceeding, and, and I thought it was, you know, we've intervened, but there's a certain awkwardness to this. This is such a massive project and really the guardrails and the guide that guides this commission is in your inland wetlands regulations and in the Connecticut Inland Wetlands Act, which delegates to this commission the right to conduct hearings under certain, for certain activities. So really, there is a violation here and you can figure out how you want to address your enforcement through those provisions. But I urge you, and I'm, I'm happy to hear from, I urge you to consult the town attorney. I have, I'd be happy to hear from attorney Finn on this. But the fact of the matter is that the statute and the regulations are very clear about the notion, once again, that anyone who proposes to conduct a regulated activity, and I just went, I won't go through it again because I don't want to take up too much time, has, you have to get a permit. And once again, there is no exception to that for violations. And if you go to your regulations and you look under violations, there's nothing in there that says that this commission can authorize these kinds of activities just by virtue of a violation and sort of shortcut the permit process. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and it's clear that the activities proposed are regulated activities. And it's clear that anyone proposing to conduct those activities must apply for a wetland permit. And so I would just, once again, I urge the commission to get a legal opinion on that, but I want to put that out there. And once again, there are very limited exceptions and they're spelled out, there's like four levels of exception in your regulations and one of them is not curing a violation. So I spoke to Mr. Glass earlier, I think, did I leave something out? I'm not sure. I also wonder whether hydrating the wetlands is something that can just be permitted by this commission by, you know, sort of in this, in the context that it was. Obviously, the work is out there and it's going forward. My client, you know, really wants to see these wetlands restored, you know, we didn't object to that, but certainly this massive project really is something that merits probably deeper consideration by the commission. So that's all I have to say to the commission. I will, I will provide this to the commission in writing, the sort of the suggestions and terms and conditions that we had. I'm happy to answer any questions, but before this goes much further, I would urge the commission to get a legal opinion as to whether what is proposed here can be done in the context of something called a remedial or restoration plan. And I would once again say that your regulations are clear that that's not the case. I'll happily, happily answer any questions. I apologize for any technical difficulties we had tonight. I want to thank you as always for your patience and your consideration.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Green. I have, I want to run through your things, but I have two things first. Just in that last little bit there, what are you suggesting? What are you talking about with our interpretation of our regulations?
What I'm suggesting is that the applicant, this can't be, the way this was, the way this has been conducted is the applicant submitted a form that the town has, it's called a remediation or restoration form. And this whole plan sort of followed and this all happened rather quickly. And what I'm suggesting is that there is a permit procedure and your regulations are clear as to what's required with an application for permit and a public hearing and the right
Mistake was made? Are you suggesting a mistake was made somewhere in the staff or the legal team from the town in accepting this application?
Not yet, no, not yet. But what I'm suggesting is that this commission cannot grant a permit in the context with, in which this proceeding sits right now. And what I'm suggesting
There is that that's a faulty application. If someone sends, submits an application, they want to get approved and you're saying by statute, it cannot be approved, then there's a major fault on the applicant's side, right? That hasn't been picked up either by the applicant, by staff, or by the legal team of the town. So you must be suggesting one of those three things has happened.
I'm suggesting that you have a violation before you, you issued a cease and desist, and you have regulations including section, I think it's six, I had it open, but my computer's a little fuzzy tonight. And so what I'm
I think, Mr. Green, I think this is something, you know, after this meeting, you maybe want to bring it up with, with staff or legal with the town because this is, this is way above our heads, what you're talking about.
Yeah, I get it.
If you can't, if you can't say that one of those three things happened, then really there's nothing for us to discuss. It's not our, not our job tonight. Thank you. The third, the last thing I want to say before we go through your list of nine things. So what is it about the applicant's application that, as intervenor and your client, what do they like? What do you guys like about it?
What, what do we like about the application?
Yeah, they presented a whole restoration plan and a series and they, they actually really did a pretty good job of meeting a bunch of conditions that the commission set forth from the previous application and our informal discussions before the second application. They've pretty much, you know, I don't, I wouldn't say what degree of accuracy, but they've gotten pretty damn close. So how do you guys feel about what they presented the second time around?
So the first thing we like, I would say, is that it doesn't involve an unbridled ten-year permit to bring in a million cubic yards of fill that, you know, where it's just gone and the applicant has ten years to act. The thing we, we, you know, obviously the conditions that we imposed or the conditions that we proposed are sort of bring this closer to something we'd like to see. I think that Mr. Glass could address you on some issues involving this impermeable membrane. Mr. Glass could address the commission on some issues involving the nature and type of fill and how the fill is placed in the site. And I think he's got some comments that we'd like to offer.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green, just for one second. We're not discussing the fill that's being brought into the site and other, other than what, it's already been prescribed previously by layers that need to go in. So the stuff that, you know, their intake, all that stuff is, is not on the table here at wetlands that we already discussed as P and Z matter. So we're not going to attach to that. I don't see you anymore, but I'm hoping you can hear me.
I can hear you, yes, sir.
Okay. Now, as far as, so, so, okay, you say that you guys are pleased with the, you know, the massive reduction in time and material being brought to the site to solve the problem. How do you guys feel about the amount of watershed that's being restored and how it's being, you know, and in the manner generally that they chose? And Mr. Glass, if you want to, we want to state your name and answer that question for us.
Thank you.
So, you go ahead, Evan.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Evan Glass from Alt Environmental Corporation in Colchester, Connecticut. Regarding the plan to rehydrate the wetlands, I haven't seen, and maybe it's been presented, but I haven't seen a plan
Joel, 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 mute your phone or something because you're giving us a feedback. Go ahead, Evan.
So this could be a question, is there a plan? Has a plan been presented on the pumping details of pumping, you know, from a well into the wetlands?
Mr. Glass, let me stop you right now. That, that plan has been approved. It's in process. If you're asking a question about it, please get the information from staff and review it so we don't waste any time on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
For the, for the part of the plan that involves the liner to direct the water, the liner is intended to mimic the former bedrock core of the ridge. And I note that the liner only goes about halfway across the hole. It goes, and the ridge line for that liner goes, you know, about halfway toward the west, you know, sort of in the middle of the hole. And I'm wondering why it wasn't carried, both the liner and the, and the ridge line, you know, farther to the west to basically cover everything that goes in the hole, increase the drainage spacing, because I noticed that the plan, the plan has a drainage area for, for that eastern wetland that's smaller than original. So if you, if you extended the liner to the west end of the hole and the ridge line, you'd increase the acreage, the drainage area that would
Mr. Glass, let me interrupt you for a second again, please. Did you, did you listen to any of the meetings where we discussed our, we had discussions about what the commission was looking from the applicant the second time around?
I, I honestly can't recall. I don't think so.
Okay, so you probably should, before you make a lot of comments about their, their current plan compared with the old one, you probably should watch those or listen because a lot of this was discussed and kind of, for the most part, kind of predetermined as part of the new solution. So you kind of set, you set us back a little bit too far. And the other comment about the liner and where it stops and ends, if you do want an interpretation or discussion, I would, we'd probably appreciate if you were to draw something up on the plan, copy the plan and explain to us what you're talking about because we kind of, you know, you're, you know what you're talking about, you visualize in your head, but we're not really following, you know, so much, you know, just by hearing it. So that would be helpful and you can continue now.
Okay. Well, my next point has to do with the, the, the material, the natural material that will be placed in the bottom of the hole. And I, I understand that that's planned to be the, what is being referred to as the rock flower from the mining that occurred that is existing on the site. Is that the case?
Kevin, you want to answer that one for Mr. Glass?
Yes, we are proposing to use native site material for the deepest fills on the site up to the elevation four eleven. And then also we've incorporated additional comments on our plans that we'd be placing native material above the liner as well.
Now, the native material in, that goes in the bottom, is that the material that is being referred to in the Planning and Doning Commission as the rock flower?
It would be quarry screenings and other onsite It would be quarry screenings and other onsite duty materials.
So the fine, the fine grain materials that weren't shipped off the site. And so my concern about that is the potential for leachability because of their fine grain nature and the potential impact for groundwater. So my, my only comment to the, to the commission and to you is to, that it would make sense to test it for leachability. And before you decide to put it into the water table. And, and then to dovetail on that, as Attorney Green mentioned, a monitoring program with enough monitoring wells in the right locations and at the right depths to detect any problems if they would occur. And that concludes my, my four points.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. As far as that whole discussion about the leachability, I'm sure there's, that hasn't been discussed yet or part of the presentation, I'm sure that they'll do their proper response to that. Now, what I like to do is go through the nine points that Mr. Green had made in his presentation. Now, I just wrote a quick note and you may have to restate the topic because it was going awfully fast. But with number one, you suggested formally incorporating the first application into the record of the second application. Is that correct? You're muted. Mr. Green, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Is that, is that what you were requesting?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so the first item is to formally incorporate IWC 2020-03.
All right, you're, go back, if you can go back to your phone would be better, but while you're doing that, Donna, has that already, has that taken place?
What, I'm sorry, has what taken place?
Has the, has the application, as Mr. Green described, been incorporated into the, into this new application as a part of the record?
No.
Okay, is that something that the, that the applicant would be able to do? Is that a problem?
Mr. Chairman, that, that is, that's not up to the applicant. That's something that the commission would have to decide.
Okay.
And the question is whether that's necessary or advisable. I mean, it's a different application, so, you know, I, I don't know necessarily why the commission would seek to incorporate that entire record into the record for this application, but that's up to the commission.
Okay, do you want to?
I can, I can.
I'd like to comment on that, Mr. Ramato, if I could. I, I, I do, I will respond to that question specifically in a minute, but I do want to point out that we got a very long laundry list of items here from the intervenor and.
Mr. Finn, please, if we could just, I'm trying to go through it as quickly as possible, so I'm trying to check them off. So just stick, let's stick to that one first.
I understand. My point is, Mr. Ramato, is that we're going to need some time to respond to these. We're not going to be able to just do that tonight.
Part of what I'm doing is trying to clarify, get a discussion from the commission, okay? And, and address them while they're fresh. Okay, so maybe in the next meeting, you know, you may be able to, we may be able to knock some of these off now. But this is to help, you know, the commission understand what's going on.
Okay, so let me, let me respond to your question again. For the record, it's Steve Finn on behalf of the applicant. I, I, I think Attorney Schellenberger did leave it up to your discretion, but to me it makes no sense. That was a different application. It had site plan aspects to it. This is a different plan, not only on the remediation. In addition, we know that there was a tremendous amount of information that was presented over the course of what, nine, 10, 12 hearings that was deemed to be irrelevant. Whether it was the intervenor talking about deep and the, and the quality of the fill and all that. It's all irrelevant. And so to incorporate that really makes you sort of responsible for that. Makes you, your decision tied to that. And I think that's a mistake. I think that's frankly, I think it's a way for the intervenor to set up an appeal. So I would urge you not to bite on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, just to keep this in mind because we'll discuss it at some point. Either there again is about this, that as Attorney Schellenberger said, it's our decision whether we want to incorporate that or not. Discuss it later, but you guys will understand. I think you got enough information on that. Number two.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could just comment, I note that several commissioners have referenced the record in the permit application. Most notably, at the last hearing, Commissioner Spence had raised some issues on her recollection of certain actions taken in the course of the permit application. Mr. Soli had characterized things that went on. I think that the record would help to clarify what actually went on and what was represented in the permit application. I don't think it's a great burden to reference that application. I disagree. You know, Mr. Finn can characterize the basis of the request any way he likes, but the reality is it's been referenced time and time and time again. And in order to have an accurate record as to what went on in that proceeding, that record should be incorporated. And it's, I don't, I don't see it as, it's done just commonly, as you're aware.
All right, thank you. So moving on to number two. So you said something about this violation needs to be, I can't remember the exact words, but before development plan. I do believe that that's exactly what's happening. I believe this is.
That's fine.
But.
That's fine. I mean, I'm just suggesting that the violation should be dealt with in a primary way and that there should not be a sort of a development component. I note that several commissioners noted that early on in the, in the proceeding and you've done that consistently with other violations.
Yeah, so, so that's, so that's what's happening, right? So we agree that that's actually what's happening.
I hope so.
So as far as commissioners understand what is the suggestion, it was that, you know, the violation be dealt with before a development plan, but this is solely, unlike the last application, this is just on its own a remediation plan. So number three. Other, so this thing about other permits that are required. I don't know that we can, as a commission, can restrict this application based on other permits that they have to get. I think that's just the way the town does their thing. You know, P and Z, you have a permit. They're going to have to get a permit maybe from DEP. I don't think we have the jurisdiction to be like the clearinghouse for all the permits for an application. And if I'm wrong, please, someone step in and tell me. So can we just forget about number three?
Sure. I mean, that's going to be what it's going to be, but.
Just, just trying to.
We'll deal with, we'll deal with that.
We're just trying to work through your comments and give it the proper, you know, time to address it. The lot lines. I do believe that a lot of these commissioners had suggested that, and through our previous information we had gained, all the remediation go, I know, I know, I know what you mean, but that all the remediation should be on one lot. And, and that's what was a, it was a big sticking point for, I think, a lot of these commissioners. And that's what they're doing. That's what they're presenting in their plan. So to say to make this all be one site is actually, I think, going against what we've already, we've already expressed as, as what we want to, to be done here. So.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard that. I've heard some commissioners say that they don't favor necessarily amending the lot line. They don't favor that, but you'll do what you're going to do.
Well, I guess we could, you know, just make sure that we're all clear here. Was there, were all the commissioners here, were we all in favor of, of having all the remediation beyond one of the properties? The restoration? Thumbs up, shows? And who wasn't?
I think that's still kind of up for grabs.
Okay.
Yes, we did want the remediation to be the response on the property. Let me rephrase that. We wanted the responsibility for the continued remediation for a property to provide the responsibility of that property on, not to have them overlapping property lines.
Right.
We can have the pump on one and the remediation on the other. That's what we were talking about. Now, this is what everybody else was talking about.
Okay. Anybody other commissioners have a comment on that?
I, I think my position was that the legal responsibility for the remediation needed to remain on one property. So that the separation of the properties was a step in the right direction. So that should one property be sold, the ownership of the four independents would have full responsibility for the restoration.
Okay.
If that clarifies, clarifies it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have anything to say on this? No, good. All right, so I think, I can't say that this is completely resolved, this, this concern, but I think we got a little bit of information on it. So that's something we can continue to say.
If I may comment, Mr. Chairman, just briefly?
Sure.
So if you do allow the lot lines to be adjusted and if four independents just consist of the crater that needs to be remediated and 64 is not, and not invoked as part of that, then I guess theoretically the owner of that property could develop 64 and four independents, which is basically a crater. An owner could conceivably just walk away from it.
Not following that 100%. You're saying if they were to sell it now, but if they were to sell it now, it's going to, I imagine they both can have a violation and a bond of. So it would just be as, as would just happen previously, someone's going to inherit the violation and there's going to be a bond. There's a bond on this piece of property that belonged to your, whatever with your client, that mess. That did it. Well, we, we took care of it now because we have a plan in front of us, but kind of, you know, there's a violation here. It belongs to the land. It doesn't belong to any one individual.
Okay.
Right?
Well, I could argue the legality to that, but I'll leave the commission to, I'm sure the town attorney will guide the commission.
Thank you. About the importing materials, number five. This is like, I think, a dead horse. I mean, we, we already know that the importing of the material coming out to the site is nothing to do with this commission. Supposedly, and the way I understand it, the materials that are actually things that we're concerned about or should be concerned about are already on site to be used to fill in certain levels of the hole. So again, the material coming in on trucks out of our jurisdiction, out of our, we're not, we're not even talking about it anymore. That's number five.
Well, if I could just.
Also, aren't you going to be having this discussion with P and Z?
We may be having this discussion with P and Z, but we would suggest that the use of materials illegally brought to the site used to fill upland review areas and regulated areas or indeed any portion of a site that has regulated areas is improper and is within the jurisdiction of this commission. So it's a violation and it was cited as a violation by this commission. So I don't, I'm not sure the horse is dead, but it sounds like we're going, you're proposing to let it die, so.
No, I think that it's, it's been determined time and time again, P and Z is going to handle this. Planning and zoning is going to, this is their part of the, the process. It's their job. So if I'm wrong or I said something wrong, let me, Mr. Glass, I see you want to chime in, but I thought my commissioners had something to say first. Lois?
Be me. I, I have to respectfully disagree with some of what you're saying because if anything that is in the fill can affect the wetlands negatively, it becomes our purview also. It is not just P and Z's responsibility because we are in charge of the wetlands. So if the material is in our upview and it has the potential of ruining our wetlands, it's in our purview. I just want to, if you think that much of a, of a set line between what P and Z can do and what wetlands exist, there's a lot of overlapping jurisdictions. I just wanted to put that out there because there may be a little bit more gray area than you're aware of.
Okay, so Lois, so to continue on that. Do we have, have we asked the applicant or have we identified an import protocol of material that, that we could, you know, make part of the app, you know, the, the permit? Have you requested?
If I could, if I could.
Kevin, you can absolutely.
Yeah, I can just chime in here for, for, for a couple of things. So as part of the, just to clarify, any representations I've made as part of this application has been based on this application and the material submitted for the record for this application. And to that point, included in our application materials and in our engineering report was a fill intake protocol, which would be implemented and followed as part of the activities associated with this application. Additionally, there was also a comprehensive report submitted by a licensed environmental professional for this property, which included not only soil samples of native materials, but also imported materials, water samples and water and that chemical analysis of the surface water and the deep bedrock water. And that report by an LEP did find that the material imported to the site is not contaminated, is not polluted. And the material on site has no issues from a, a, a environmental standpoint or a, or a pollution standpoint. So I think the record is clear that we have submitted testing by an LEP that deems that the site is clean and the material on the site is clean. There's all kinds of speculations and other things, but there's been no evidence on the record to suggest the contrary.
All right, thank you. Mr. Glass, you can go ahead.
Thank you. With respect to the point about the groundwater being tested, there were only two wells tested and they were very distant from where the fill, from, from where the fill testing was done. And, and so one LEP indicated that that was adequate. I'm an LEP and I don't think that's adequate. Also, with regard to the material acceptance procedure, it's been stated that DEP has it and is reviewing it. And DEP has not weighed in on it at all, to my knowledge. And so to, to say that DEP has it almost implies that they've accepted it. And I don't believe they have.
Okay, let me help out with this.
But that's an issue, that's an issue for the applicant to work out with DEP and that's beyond the scope, I believe, of the wetlands commission.
Well, well, not really, because I agree with what Lois said, which, and I can't say it any better than she did, which is that the groundwater, the quality of groundwater, groundwater flows to surface water and to wetlands. And so, and so you need to protect that quality of the groundwater. So until, you know, everyone is comfortable with the type of material that's going to be placed in the hole and the quality of the groundwater that will result, then, then it is in the wetlands purview and jurisdiction. And the last point I'll make about jurisdiction, which is it's a common legal tactic to claim no jurisdiction when if there was jurisdiction, they don't like the outcome of the finding of the, of the, of the body that's making the decision. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Spence. The, there, as Kevin solely stated, they have an intake, material intake protocol. Do you have any problems or concerns with that protocol?
No, 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 no. The only problem that I have is that we can't. What happened, happened, we've already had the test, we've already had the experts weigh in on them. What I'm saying is more to everybody to understand that when the word fill is mentioned, we can't just dismiss it as not being our purview because it could be in our purview. So it's, it's not an admonition, but it's, I hope you can weigh in on this too. It's more of a, of a educational point that just because fill is mentioned, it doesn't mean that we don't, we don't have any say in it.
So.
I'm not questioning what has been put in. I'm not questioning. I'm not questioning what has been put in, I'm not questioning anything about what Mr. Solley was referring to. I'm merely clarifying that we could have jurisdiction over future fill if it had the potential to affect our wetlands one way or the other. That's really all. Does that seem more clear?
Yes, thank you. And I apologize if I said something wrong or misstated something, but let me just, just, I wanna try to bring this full circle. So Kevin, what you're saying is that in your application to us right now, you are volunteering a material intake protocol. Right?
Correct.
That's correct. So Lois, we actually have jurisdiction, according to what Kevin just said, right now, on the fill material being brought into the area for the remediation. Okay, so it gives us jurisdiction. So to put this to rest, as the commission, we have to evaluate that protocol and be satisfied with it, understand? So if Lois, if you read that protocol, which they're giving us jurisdiction over, it's not even a question anymore. And as long as you're satisfied with the protocol, then we are, we are, you know, holding their feet to the fire, so to to follow what we want for that intake protocol.
You are, Mr.
Go ahead.
Ironically, you're treating this like it's a permit for future activities for the filling that's going on in the future. We are here on a violation. We're here on a violation.
The restoration of the violation is to replace watershed over a certain amount of square feet, acres, however you wanna call it. Material needs to be brought in to do that. The applicant just said that they're volunteering because technically someone could argue that this was only a P and Z matter as far as it gets trucked in, they're volunteering an intake protocol to be evaluated by our commission. So there is no question that that question comes off the table. We are now, we now, they're giving us a jurisdiction, they're granting, it's not even a question. They're allowing us to have, you know, what's the word?
Oversight.
But oversight, yes. So I think, I think everybody's happy. I think that, I think that makes everybody, anybody who's got a question about this particular topic should be satisfied with what's happened.
Mr. Chairman, you cited them and Denise Halsted issued a letter that raised the issue of illegal filling and the illegal import of materials to this site.
Okay.
This is a violation.
Determined that that is no longer an issue for us.
Material was presented in a report provided.
All right, so, but you also have, Mr. Green, you also are likely going to be in front of P and Z for, so some of the things that you're bringing to us, you know, are at the wrong commission, you know, you have, you have that opportunity on that topic. So we're back to number six.
Respectfully, the intervenor disagrees, but you're gonna, you know, it's your decision.
Okay. Number six, what was that, just re- repeat number six real quick for me, Mr. Green.
The commission should require that the applicant provide quarterly reporting regarding the results of its efforts to rehydrate on-site wetlands.
Got it, thank you. That's all I need to refresh my memory, thank you. Kevin, can you please tell us what kind of reporting we're gonna be getting according to the previous approved application? What's part of that, what was approved?
So that's up to this commission to require. I'll say that when the application was before P and Z, we'll likely have a quarterly reporting requirement.
Second, Kevin, Kevin, let me just stop you for a second. The approved rehydration plan, did we have any conditions about reporting?
We did. I don't recall the specifics. Let me pull that up and I can recite that to you.
Okay, you go back to, we'll get back to that, we'll go to seven. Repeat number seven from you, Mr. Green.
Dust mitigation plan.
I'm sorry?
Quarterly reporting.
The mitigation, say, no, number seven.
Yes. Yeah, monitoring, with monitored dust mitigation program.
Okay, isn't that in your, it's back to, you know, Kevin again, isn't that part of your current application? Monitoring?
Yes, well, the, sorry, the dust mitigation.
No, were we on dust?
I think that was number seven. Well, that was number seven, that's what I wrote down for number seven.
Oh, wait, you're right, it was the dust. Okay, so.
And dust suppression, dust suppression is required as part of the stormwater general permit for construction activities, and that's actually built into our plan, so that is already a part of our application.
It's part of our application, to this wetlands and also P and Z?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Do anybody have any comments about the dust suppression plan? Has anybody reviewed it on the commission and comments?
I did not review it, but I know in previous experiences that there usually, I mean, I had a quarry behind me for quite a while, and the dust suppression plan was supposedly being followed, and we all had to wash our windows every couple of weeks. It was, and there were neighbors that had to wash their clothes. The must, dust mitigation plan, I understand what Mr. Green is asking for. He's asking for monitoring the dust also. If you ever went down years ago, I went down the sixty-four Cambridge driveway before Mr. Park owned it, and the wetlands were literally covered with dust. I mean, everything was, you would've thought that a volcano had blown up. And I saw this personally, this is firsthand experience, and this is within following the Stormwater Control Manual guidelines. So the monitoring of actually ends up in the wetlands is probably a good idea. I do believe that they're following all the protocols and, but, you know, unless you do it several times a day on a dry, on a dry windy day, there's not gonna be much dust.
Commissioner Spence, what is your, I'm sorry, what is your, what is the concern? I mean, dust is a reality of construction everywhere, but what is your, is there a concern for us of dust? I mean, obviously, the number one is, you know, reason for dust control is human health, right? Diesel motors and plants and everything else that gets affected by dust and glass windows are certainly secondary to human lungs. Not to say that plants aren't lungs of the planet, but you know what I mean? What are the concerns of the dust for this application?
Well, are you referring to me?
Yes, I'm asking you if you have an opinion on.
I do. Humans kind of avoid dust and they don't live there twenty-four hours a day. Or for every minute that the dust is being generated. Wetlands don't have that option. They're there, they can go nowhere. And the dust can smother them. You can ask Mr. Kenny, what kind of effect would heavy dust have on wetland plants and on animals that are sensitive to this kind of thing? So the monitoring, I would think, would not be a bad idea. And just to see if maybe the protocol needs to be updated a little bit if we find that there's too much. I'm not saying that there's not gonna be any, that's unrealistic, but if there's too much, then and by monitoring, we can do that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
One second, Mr. Green. Actually, thank you, Lois, I was actually going to suggest that we also refer to Bill Kenny.
That was my point.
Yeah, so.
That was my point.
Thank you. And we go back, I see that he's here, but he's muted. Bill, I guess the question is, how does dust have an effect on wetlands, plants and restoration, you know, progress?
On the restoration progress or?
Both. So what's the effect, what's the effect that, you know, there's, if the dust control isn't adequate or we have a lapse or something?
If some, typically, the dust amounts to very, it's hard to measure, but if, certainly if you were to cover an entire leaf, you would stop its ability to continue to grow. But with rain and it washes off the leaves and allows for growth, it might have a minimal effect on the growth of plants by covering leaves, but with proper control, you can avoid that.
Is there a long-term problem, like let's say there was a three weeks between a heavy rain, some dust got out into the wetlands or anywhere in the woods, you know, is there a long-term effect that could happen from it sitting there for a couple of weeks?
I don't know, there's not a long-term effect. I think, you know, what's the long, the real impact is not having water go to the wetlands. So what you're doing now by rehydrating the wetlands, that's really the big, the big thing.
Yeah, we're just trying to, we're just trying to resolve a, you know, a topic about dust control, that's all. So, great for that information. Is there any other comments or questions from the commission concerning dust? Right, Chris Hall?
I have been looking for that dust remediation plan. Was that submitted?
I. It's control plan, dust control.
Control plan, yes.
Okay.
The dust, the dust suppression information is included on our Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Plan. It's note twenty-six, I could read it for the commission. Any stockpiles of strip materials are to be periodically sprayed with water or a crust, or a crusting agent to stabilize potentially wind-blown material. Hall roads both into and around the site are to be sprayed as needed to suppress dust. Trucks hauling import fill material are to be tarped to aid in the control of airborne dust during high wind events.
Kevin, you went, Kevin, we don't hear you. Kevin, Kevin, the last thing we heard was high wind event. Kevin Solley. Okay? Can you hear me? Can't hear anybody.
I can hear you.
Okay, all right, all right.
But I can't hear Kevin. And Kevin can't hear us.
No.
Little phone went white there rather than green.
Yeah, I've never seen that before.
I'm looking to see if I can.
Send a message.
Now he's back.
Okay.
There you are.
My apologies.
High wind, the last thing we heard was, the last thing we heard was high wind.
Sure, so during high wind events, twenty to thirty mile per hour sustained, construction activities shall be limited or ceased if dust cannot be controlled by wetting. So additionally, because the operations have to be conducted in accordance with the stormwater general permit for both commercial activities and industrial activities, there, you know, those measures have to be incorporated. So that is built into the application before the commission. And I'll say, any prior activities regarding dust, you know, we have a new applicant, a new owner, a new operator, and I think the, a lot of road dust probably from this site was like degenerates from the crushing activity that went on for years and years. And we're not proposing any, you know, the crushing activities are ceasing, we're trying to just place material and fill it in the hole.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from anybody about dust?
My only one was that monitoring would not hurt if we're gonna monitor the hydration of the wetlands and we're gonna monitor everything else, why not monitor what dust is there? It's easy.
Okay, Kevin, is that part of your monitoring program?
It is, it is part of our Soil Erosion and Sediment Control inspections that we have to do as part of our deep general permit. Additionally, I did find for our, for the rehydration application, which is already approved, it did include a monitoring that quarterly on or about April first, July first, and October first. No inspection required January first. Soil scientists will inspect wetlands and burnout pools to review efficacy of rehydration and provide a report for town and road and staff and commission members. So that already was built into the last remediation approval, and it would be carried over again into this one as well.
Okay, thank you. So are we satisfied on six and seven? Okay. Number eight. What was number eight again, Mr. Green?
In August of twenty, I note that Commissioner Hall and I believe Commissioner Spence were interested in, and again, I'm referring to the permit application, as it has been referred to many times, but the permit application, there was a discussion of having groundwater monitoring, monitoring wells established on the site with reporting as to the quality of the water in each well.
All right, thank you. Is this anywhere, Kevin, on the application right now?
We are not proposing, continue to repeat it, groundwater monitoring and reporting. Again, we've provided analytical data to show that the using conditions are okay, and we're only proposing to bring in fill that meets the definition of clean fill with additional restrictions to eliminate any potential contaminants that would go along with some of those other definitions. So we don't believe that would be necessary and it is not proposed as part of this current application.
All right, thank you. Do we, it feels like a DEP thing, not a wetlands thing to monitor groundwater. Does anybody on the commission have a different thought on that? Mr. Hall?
I won't say it's a different thought, I just wanted to clarify my earlier statement about that. I, my interest is that the well that is drilled on four independents that would be rehydrating the wetlands would have a water quality measurement, water quality monitoring from that specific well. That was the entirety of it.
And I would, I would agree with that, I think that would make sense. I think once that well is drilled, we can do testing to ensure that that, that source is suitable for discharge into the wetlands. I think that would be reasonable and the applicant would certainly be willing to agree to that. And I just wanna point out one other item regarding additional ongoing testing. As part of our general permit for industrial activities, we are required to perform a chemical analysis of superficial stormwater discharge that leaves the site. So that is something that we have to do as part of our deep permit. So that is, so testing of the superficial water is done on a routine basis.
All right, thank you. Mr. Glass?
Thank you. Evan Glass, Old Environmental. Regarding the existing groundwater monitoring that's been done, my opinion, as I've stated before, is that is insufficient. The scant monitoring of two monitoring wells distant from where the fill is, is insufficient to qualify the existing fill material as not contaminating the groundwater. And if that is the basis for the commission or feeling that they don't have jurisdiction over the past fill, I think that you're making a mistake.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Okay. So as far as the monitoring of the water, that'll be included now from the well that's being drilled or is proposed being drilled to hydrate the wetlands. Correct, Kevin?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Why are we talking about conditions? We haven't even gone through most of the specification materials yet. These are.
Because this is stuff that was brought up by the intervenor.
Yes, these are conditions that are recommended by the intervenor that we attach to whatever it is that we decide on this application. But it is something for us to decide after we've heard everything. We don't have to beat it to the bush now. This is not the time.
All right, I understand.
And when we're deliberating, this is when we should be talking about this stuff, not now.
All right. If someone brings up a good suggestion, though, I mean, why can't we address it now?
Without really giving them enough time. And I just think things need to evolve a little bit more before we start talking about conditions. We have the condition recommendation. Now, that's all, I just was. Now, that's all. I just was getting a little.
Okay, so the ninth, the ninth item, the last item is Mr. Green explained to us why they have the right to intervene. But the thing that I find that kind of where I'm a little confused is that you are intervening. You are here. You are taking the time at the hearing. You are bringing up concerns. You do have your professionals, you know, speaking. We're allowing you the time to present your findings of the plan. Where are you not, where are you being, where are you being stopped as an intervenor?
I think at some point the commission, we're not, I guess, I think you raise a great point, and I think that you know, there is a procedure, though, where the commission either sort of grants or denies the intervention. And obviously you've allowed us to present and we appreciate that. We appreciate your consideration. But I think if, I, I, once again, I'm referring to the permit application and there was this discussion where it was kind of a dialogue where someone said, no pollution, no intervention, and, you know, we deny the intervention. And I just wanted to, the only reason I went through that is just to show that by, by design, this is a, it's sort of a low bar to intervene. If you can show that there has been, once again, this impact on natural resources. And all I was trying to point out is we're looking at this crater and we're looking at, you know, hundreds of thousands of yards of material that were excavated here without adequate authorization and much of it. And so by definition, I mean, it refers to past conduct. Here we are and we appreciate your hearing us. And, but I just didn't want, sort of, it's sort of frustrating to hear that during the permit process.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? I, I, I thought the, the point of the 2029 statute is to, to for someone to intervene on behalf of the environment for a proposed activity. And it needs to, that activity has to have a reasonable likelihood of causing unreasonable harm to the environment or the public trust. And I don't think you can intervene on past actions.
Well, that's where we pay.
Past actions or activities.
So maybe you didn't hear me when I first read the statute, but it refers to conduct which has or which is reasonably likely to have the effect of unreasonably polluting, comma, impairing, and then it adds or destroying the public trust in the air, water, or other natural resources. And my point is there is has been conduct that has impacted, has impaired, and certainly has destroyed the public trust in natural resources. So, and I'm just saying, we've made our presentation, so I'm not sure this merits a lot of, you know, necessarily a lot of consideration, but I just wanted to clarify that. And the word has is specifically in the statute.
Okay. Mr. Green, we've allowed you to speak. We've allowed you to, you know, we've given you, shared the information. You're obviously, you know, doing right by your client. You guys have done a lot of that, you know, a lot of work, brought, you know, very many points. And we've considered them all. So I think we're all been given a fair shake, so to speak. So if there's anything else, I would like to turn it back over to the applicant so they can continue with their application.
The only other aspect again is the procedural issue that I've raised. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to set the record straight. On the permit application, the commission did not deny the intervention. The commission allowed the intervention, but found that the intervenor did not meet his burden of proof. So those are two separate things.
I, I concur. And my last piece, Mr. Chairman, is, once again, I urge you to give Mr. Finn a fair shake at it and get an opinion from Attorney Schellenberg on the procedural issue that I've raised. And I'm pretty confident on the, sort of, where we are procedurally. And that is really that whatever the applicant is seeking cannot be granted in the context of, of this proceeding. But I'll leave it to counsel to offer their opinions.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin. You can go ahead.
Let me just, if I could, Mr. Chairman, let me just jump in for a minute, then turn it back to Kevin. This is Attorney Finn on behalf of the applicant. I think it bears repeating, though, I think we all know this, that this is a remediation application. And to me, the idea that a remediation application, which you've all sat and listened to now, and as we mentioned in the pre-application meetings, was discussed with you, that that somehow could harm the environment, makes no sense to me. We are here to remediate the property because of the notice of violations. So to the extent that there is past conduct, you've issued your notice of violations and we are responding to that with this remediation plan. And I also want to echo what Attorney Schellenberg said, and that is, is that the intervenor is allowed to be heard, but at some point you need to make a decision about whether it's met its ultimate burden. And again, just reading it to you, they have to show that the activities that are proposed are reasonably likely to have the effect of unreasonably polluting or impairing the air, water, or other resources of the state of Connecticut or destroying, destroying the public trust in that. I don't know how a remediation application that has, that is meritorious could ever not meet that, the, the burden of showing that this is good for the wetlands and this is what we need to do for this property. With that, I, I am going to turn it back to Kevin. So I'm going to urge you to, again, make the same finding you did the last time, and that is the intervenor has not proven the ultimate showing that it needs to do. You know, I, I think Commissioner, Chairman Romano, you're going through these, these items that were identified by the intervenor was very, very helpful because many of them, I, I think, are not proper, not within your power to order. For example, making our application contingent on getting approvals from other agencies just not proper. And frankly, I think Attorney Green probably knows that. But I don't want to, and frankly, I, I wanted the opportunity to sort of respond, have some time to respond to that. But based on sort of what you've done, you may have streamlined the process and we may be able to close tonight. If we're not going to be sort of boomeranged with, when we get to some of these discussions down the road. So I would be interested in canvassing the commissioners to know what if any of these conditions that have, we've not already, we've already addressed many of them, like six, seven, and eight. It'd be helpful to know where we stand on that because we might be able to streamline this process. And I know Kevin's here. I know Bill Kenny probably has a few more comments to make. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Finn. One, one thing I did want to maybe ask Attorney Finn to opine on, and certainly Attorney Schellenberg to opine on. You know, so as, as applicants, we came before the commission with the application for regulated activity. This commission told us, don't bring that application before us. Bring a remediation or restoration application to this commission for you to consider a project that doesn't include development. We heeded those words. We did exactly what was requested of us. And now Attorney Green is suggesting that this commission can't even approve this application as submitted and authorized the applicant to move forward with the content of the application. So I, I, I find that a little bit perplexing. So I would be curious if Attorney Schellenberg or Attorney Finn has any comment on that. Because that's, that was, you know, Attorney Green's last item, and I think that's one that's worthy of discussion.
I, I honestly, I don't really understand the basis for that position. And I would like to have a better understanding, a better explanation. If you could point to exactly where in the regulations you think that it supports your position, I would appreciate that and I would be happy to look into it. I'm not aware offhand of a prohibition on an application like this going forward.
I can respond to, I can respond to that either.
Hold on, hold on for a second. Attorney Schellenberg, Attorney Finn, Attorney Green. I'm sure this is a very, very complex issue that we don't need to hear about tonight. You guys can probably figure that out as you've done in the past. We can continue to get the information from, from Mr. Soli about the application. We could answer some questions from the commissioners. I do believe all the commissioners here are in favor of granting an application that is going to fix the problem. So I don't think any of us have all of a sudden have said, wait a second, we don't want to go forward with this application. I don't think that's in anybody's head right now. So if that makes sense, you guys can have your fun tomorrow. Is that okay?
I mean, it's fine with me. I'm just, I'm not suggesting that it has to be, that we have to discuss this tonight. I'm just saying that I cannot evaluate the issue right now because I don't understand fully what the basis for Attorney Green's position is. So, you know, that's fine. He can get in touch with me. He can call me. He can email me and explain it at another time, and then I'm, I'm happy to review it. And of course, Attorney Finn can weigh in as well.
Yeah, I, just very briefly, Chairman, Attorney Finn, I, I agree with Attorney Schellenberg. I don't understand the argument. Frankly, I've seen these types of applications for remediations in a number of other municipalities, never had this issue raised. I think this commission, based on the number of hearings that I've attended over the last year and a half, when it deals, when it has a violation, this is how it deals with it. It asks for an application to remediate the problem. That's how you've interpreted your regulations. But the only thing, the only thing I'll ask is of Attorney Green on the record, to the extent that you send something to Attorney Schellenberg, please make sure to copy me on it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kevin, let's try it again.
Thank you. So, you know, continuing, so we, we did submit some formal response to comments last week. And with that response, we included some minor planner visions, which was discussed with the commission at the last hearing. I'm happy to go through those very quickly.
Please.
We incorporated some additional detail on the liner and a plan and section which shows how a building could be constructed in the future and how that could be handled. We also proposed a well to be located on four independence drives with piping to connect into the existing rehydration piping that's already been installed, which would allow for all of the remediation activities to be located entirely on four independence drives. So I think we were able to meet the commission's concerns and provide revised information to that end. Since we're talking about the rehydration, I guess I'd like to have Bill Kenny to speak now for just a few minutes. I think he has actually some really good news that the commission is going to be very excited about.
Okay.
Yes. Hello, Bill Kenny again, wetland scientist, soil scientist. We have begun to do our monitoring and we were out on site. I was out on site this week. Was it Monday afternoon? And it was great to see that we're, that wetland hydrologic conditions are, are becoming apparent. I dug some test pits and I was, I found groundwater at about 18 inches in depth. Now, in this wetland, we want to see water above the surface. That's what would be in this wetland at this time right now. But the fact is, when we've done our investigations of this wetland over the last year before the rehydration program that you approved a few months ago, before that was put into place just a few weeks ago. Anytime we did test pits before that, we never found any groundwater. And so now we do, are starting to see some groundwater in, in the wetland. It's, it still needs to continue to rise to a higher level to meet the conditions of what this wetland would be. But it's great to see, it's one, one great thing that it's indicating is that there isn't some massive fracture in the underlying bedrock that is allowing water to drain out. That the, it's indicating to me that the primary reason that this wetland is drier than it had been in the past is that it wasn't receiving enough water, rather than it was losing water from, from below. So we're adding that water. We've increased the amount of water flowing to it in accordance with your approval and it's early signs are, is that it's working. So it's great to see.
Thank you.
So, you know, we did receive, thanks, Phil, you know, we did receive some revised comments from Scott Schott, line of town engineer, yesterday. We've discussed those comments with him and we're happy to, and we can certainly work with him to address them all as part, as part of a condition of approval. Assuming this commission views this restoration application favorably. One item I wanted to discuss with the commission regarding Scott's revised comment letter had to do with the bond recommendation that he provided. And, you know, I guess there were, there were, there were he, he, he provided a bond recommendation of $740,000. And there were a couple of components that I wanted to kind of mention and discuss. For one, he actually expanded, well, first and foremost, I was curious what the commission's history has been with requiring bonds for restoration remediation applications. I think, you know, that was one question. Another question was, it looks like Scott's recommendation has expanded the area to be restored beyond the limits of the upland review area, and he's tried to apply it to the entirety of the site. I also would, would suggest that that is not typical. Generally, this commission looks for site stabilization restoration measures to be, to cover only the area that's regulated as part of an activity. So we would, we definitely had some issues with some of the quantities and cost values that he's identified. But on, on another note, on a more fundamental note, I think what I'd like to, to offer the commission to consider is that we're going to have to go through a planning and zoning commission process to get a fill permit to implement this work. As part of that, the planning and zoning commission has, has bonding requirements that they can enforce. But we'll have the same conversation with them. You know, we're here to try to fix a problem. And if the commission is going to apply somewhat extensive bonding requirements, it's going to cost more to do that than to do a lot of the work and to really get a lot of the, the improvements happening on a much more rapid basis. So what I would, what I would ask the commission to potentially consider is to require a bond for a number that is considerable enough to make sure that there's skin in the game, but not necessarily exorbitant enough where it's going to create, you know, other disincentive to see this work happen in a more quickly timely manner. So what I would offer, you know, our, our, our bond estimate was $143,000. Scott came back with 740. You know, we would request the commission maybe consider something maybe $250,000, which is still not a small amount, but it's not nearly, you know, three quarters of a million dollars. When, when we know that the planning and zoning commission is going to have additional bonding requirements above and beyond what, what this commission can do. And again, I, I ask if, if the, if the commission generally has, applies bonding requirements for remediation restoration applications. You know, I think we, you know, we're, we're here to answer any other questions the commission may have based on our revised information. You know, I, 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 I know we have a lot of back and forth, but I do want to thank Attorney Green for, and, and the interested parties, the intervenor, because as I said before, I think it helps, makes these applications better. And I think we've been able to incorporate a number of things into this revised application. I think we, we've tried to be as, since the beginning, where we're, we're trying to, the, the current property owner has, has complete and total dedication to, to clean this property up and to get this into a better condition than it is today. And we honestly feel that this application addresses that. It addresses the concerns raised at the last, the last go around, and we think that we're, we're pretty proud of what we have. And some of our measures are already showing success. So we're, we're really excited to get the rest of this moved on to the next phase and, and get some fill in that hole and get this property back as, as quickly as we can. So happy to answer any other questions the commission may have. And if there's anything. And if there's anything else, or, oh, one other point I did want to make. You know, Attorney Green did make a comment that he filed FOI requests on all of the sources of material that were imported to the site and that there's no record of any demo debris being brought to the property. That's what we've been saying from the beginning because we didn't import any demolition debris into the property. We imported clean fill. And that's what we've maintained from the beginning. And so I think that just helps reinforce our position from the beginning. So, so with that, we did have to answer any other questions the commission may have.
Thank you. All right, in regards to the bond.
Thank you.
Anybody, any commissioners have any comments about the bond? That Scott Schottstein came up with? Anyone? Come on, Commissioner Stewart, we deal with this all the time.
I would actually love to hear from Jim.
Anybody else in the meantime?
I, I don't feel qualified to speak to it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hall.
I don't either. I didn't get itemized either, so I just have general ones on, so, not that I would know the difference.
The bond I have for 64 Cambridge is $143,000.
That's what they, that's their applicant's proposed, correct?
Ooh, that's the applicant's bond, okay. I don't, I don't, did not see Scott's.
Commissioner Stewart, Scott issued revised comments yesterday. And in his revised comments, he had a bond recommendation of $740,000. And as I mentioned, I thought some of those were, you know, we've, we had some fundamental disagreements with some of the, the unit costs and even quantities. So we, we, again, that's why I made the point that I just did.
Well, I can take a look at it for the next meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Spence?
I was just going to ask if there was an itemized, usually the bond recommendation, like the one supplied by the applicant. We just had a one some, so we don't really have any particulars involved.
The only reference I could find was at the very back of his letter, bond recommendation, and in this one paragraph that may be relevant, under other. So there's no, no itemization.
There's actually, there is a bond estimate form which is itemized, which we filled out and then he adds to. So it was part of his submission to the commission. It does have an itemized list.
Kevin, you think that his quantities are off or his unit pricing is off or both?
I think, I think he, I think some of both. I think he expanded the, the area to be topsoil seeded and fertilized to extend beyond the limits of the regulated area. And he says it's such that he thinks it should be for the entire site, even the area beyond what the commission regulates. And then he did add some additional, he increased the, the unit prices. You know, and, and we understand, you know, but, but again, the, the beauty of, not the beauty of, but one of the things that the commission has here is that, and we've represented throughout the duration, you issued a violation. We've submitted a restoration application to cure that violation. But as we discussed at the last meeting, if something doesn't work, if something isn't working, you can call us back in. We're, we're not going anywhere. We're going to be here and this applicant is going to be, we're going to be back before this commission several times. So rather than put an exorbitant bond amount, if, if something isn't working, we're here to, to be responsive to this commission. So, you know, we're not, we're not going anywhere.
Kevin, so what percentage of, of the work is, is in the review area versus the, the rest of the site for disturbance? Like, how much did he overshoot for, in a way, is it like half and half? You know, where?
So our, our, our costs for that line item was $112,000, $112,750. His revised number was $480,000.
Okay, so, so as far as the upland, the part that our, our review area, right? That's about half of what his total is. So the other half is for parts out of our concern? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yeah.
No, it's not. It's 750. It's more like two thirds, a third.
Well, he, he, he actually, he actually, he, we were about, he added about 40% to the area and he tripled the unit price of the activity.
Okay. Okay. But this is, it's a blanket one that would cover both, both the applications you guys are going for, right? It's, it's not, it covers wetlands and it covers the rest of it. So the right, what I'm saying, what percentage adds to wetlands portion?
Oh, well, well, the, based on, it's about a 1,100 square feet of regulated area that needs to be stabilized and restored. And he increased that to 1.6 million square feet. So he added over, you know, 470,000 square feet of area. So almost 10 acres of additional restoration area that's outside of the regulated area.
Gotcha, okay. All right. Any other commissioners on the bond, questions? Right, Commissioner Spence?
I would actually like to hear Scott's comments on that. I know what he, what, what his recommendation was, but he's not here to qualify what it was that he's recommending. So I would like to hear, before we mess around with the bond and before Jim gets a chance to look at it, I would like to hear Scott's justification. Very frequently, he has a completely different viewpoint that is just as valid. So I would like to hear it from all side.
Kevin, is there, I, I know what I'm thinking. I don't know how to say it, but isn't there like a, a publication that large, like companies would use to, to come up with values for large projects like this? That maybe would be able to, you know, might contradict what, you know, maybe what, what Scott had done in your favor? That you could reference? I forgot the name of it, MEAT, it's something, book.
RS, RS MEAT, yes, is a, RS MEAT is a national publication which helps establish unit prices for different construction activities. It's something that we use commonly to, to apply prices to, for construction cost estimates and things like that. So, so yes.
Have you checked that?
And that is, it is something that we rely on when we prepare these. There's obviously, you know, local variations, which that does take into consideration and provide additional variables that can be applied. You know, so, so we're, we're, we're somewhat of a difference of opinion. But again, I, I, you know, the, the, the bond is substantive and it, and it expands beyond the limits of what the commission has done before. And again, I ask if they've done that for restoration applications.
Kevin, Kevin, just, just looking at what you have, I mean, you only have $1,000 for sediment control measures for a project that's going to last five years. That's, I mean, that's not even close to what it's going to cost to, to install and maintain sediment control measures. You have, you have 10 cents a square foot for topsoil seeding and fertilizing. It's closer to 30 cents just to buy the topsoil to get four inches of topsoil on, on a square foot. So I, I would say that, that you are significantly lower than, than where, where it's going to end up.
Well, well, item two is also self fence and hay bale. So that is another $11,000. It's not just a thousand for, for sediment control. But, but, but I really do, but there is, you know, there, the, it's, it's not in, not in, it's not an entirely an import situation. You know, there is some topsoil on site, but, but, but we, you know, do we think, and as I mentioned before, you know, I think we'd ask the commission to consider a bond that's, you know, maybe higher than what our estimate was, below than 740.
Okay. So part of the application is a request to lower than Scott's bond. And you said you were going to also catch out a little bit with him?
We can, we can, we, we spoke with him today. We discussed his comments. You know, there, there are, you know, a number of his comments, you know, they say it should be discussed with the commission. I think we've discussed those with the commission. They talked about, you know, the, you know, the reduction in the contributing watershed. We've discussed at length, so I think we've addressed that. I think, you know, I think, I think everything else he has, we can, we can address as, you know, part of a condition of approval to amend the plans as, you know, to his satisfaction. And then again, those are going to go through the same, that's also going to go through a process of planning and zoning. So he, his, his, his influence on this application certainly isn't, isn't halted. And we can certainly satisfy his, his concerns from his latest comment letter.
Okay. Any questions about the application from commissioners? Commissioner Spence?
Yes. First though, I have some questions for Bill Kenny.
Phil?
There you are.
Yes.
Okay, we keep talking about the, the hydration is working, whether or not it's working. We need to define working. Is it just that there's water going in? Is, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth. We need to define the criteria. How, how are we going to gauge what is working? What is, what's supposed to change? What areas should we be, should we look at to see how different they are as opposed to what they should be? We need to have a lot more parameters. We can't just say it's working. That, that could mean that just the pump is blowing. That's not any definition of what is actually happening with the wetlands that the pump is supposed to be supplying. And I would like to see that in writing so that we have that in the record. Okay, what, what, what are we going to consider our criteria and what are our parameters? And I would like to see it in writing. I've also, how often should the wetlands be monitored to check? Or whether it's working? Once again, what are we looking for? What areas should be monitored? Is it just one area? Is it just the center of the vernal pool? Is it all of the periphery of the vernal pool? And how long, if this is going to work? How long should it take before oblique species return? That is, that, to me, that's a pivotal, that's a pivotal question because vernal pools are the reason for oblique species and vice versa. So if they don't return, then it's not, well, I can't say that, I'm not the expert. Anyway, I would like that kind of, that kind of report. What is it that we're expecting? How often can we expect it? Where are we expecting it? Okay, then moving on from the, the definition part. Will the proposed plan of watershed drainage, so that's just the area that's where species flowing off of independent, rehydrate any portion of the wetland south of the southern reach of the liner? Let me know if you need clarification.
Would you repeat that?
Will the proposed plan of watershed drainage, having nothing to do with the pumping of groundwater, will that plan rehydrate any portion of the wetland south of the southern reach of the liner? Or is it only going to affect that section where, wherever the south, wherever the liner hits? It's only going to be to the north of that? Or will it go to the southern reaches?
Are you, do you have more you want to?
Well, I have more questions. I thought, I don't know if you want to answer the one, one at a time.
Okay, well, you went through four and then?
No, the, the, the hydration plan, I mean, the, the working thing, that I'd like to have as a written report. We need to incorporate that into the record as a written report. That's my request. Because that, this is a long-term plan, even though it's shorter than the other plan, it's still a long-term plan. I don't know how many of our commissioners is still going to be on the board in five years. I don't know how much that we're still going to have in five years. Everything's going to change, most likely. So we have to have it in writing in the record. My point. That's, that's that part. And then the other, the others are just yes or no questions that, that I'm hoping to get answered tonight.
Okay. The wetland that is being rehydrated, wetland two drains from south to north. So when the water that's entering from the liner on the Independence Lot, that will affect the northern portion of the wetland. Because the wetland is pitching north, it won't affect the southern portions of the weather.
Thank you, that was a good question. So is that drainage that is going into the northern part, which is seen backwards to me, the northern part of the vernal pool, will that have any effect on the more northernly portions of that vernal pool?
Yes. So it, it will, the areas that it drains to, it will hydrate those areas.
But only the areas that it drains to?
Correct.
It will not affect the rest of the pool?
If, and we'll, we, that's, the, the monitoring will allow us to understand this fully, but it's a combination of the pumping and the watershed modification.
I'm really only interested in the watershed modification at this point. That's the point.
Right.
Okay, so the answer is?
It will affect the northern piece. If it gets to a point on wetter seasons, wetter years, it has the potential to inundate to a point where it would back up into the southern portions.
Now, if I'm remembering correctly, that section that is draining to is at elevation 448 and the rest of the pool is at 450. What's the likelihood that overflow is going to go north as opposed to, what's the likelihood that the overflow is going to go south to the rest of the pool rather than going north?
Right. As a, yes, as I said, it's primarily going to hydrate the northern portion.
Just a, a point of order, our previous application did propose to change that watershed to feed the southern end and that application was denied by this commission.
Kevin, thank you, but my turn. Okay. Would the quantity of natural drainage on southern reaches of vernal pools be more beneficial than the current proposed plan of permitting?
I don't think they're going to be substantially, there would be a substantial difference. I think that the pumping or the watershed approach are substantially the same.
Even if the watershed was increased to where it used to be?
Correct. If it was increased to where it used to be, that would equal the objectives of pumping.
Isn't there a difference in quality of water that drains through a significant amount of soil and groundwater that comes from a different section of the?
We could, I, on this site with the groundwater, you know, I think the, well, again, We could, I, on this site with the groundwater, you know, I think the, well, again, I guess there was the proposal to restore the whole watershed, but that, we came back with the proposal based on the comments from the commission. And the major thing is the volume of water. The major factor is the volume of water. The quality of the water that we're dealing with, it's, we're not collecting water off a parking lot. It's groundwater from a well. So.
Okay. Um.
It won't be exactly, they, they're not, the chemistry isn't exactly the same, but it's not meaningful, in my opinion, the difference between the two.
Is the bridge that will be removed the only implement, only impediment to reconnecting the flow north to Pine Swamp? Will it can, will, when that bridge is removed, will that help reestablish the connection between vernal pool, not vernal pool, wetlands and Pine Swamp?
It will restore the, the flow of water through that location. I don't know, north of that, off of our property, if there are some other obstructions, but it certainly would restore the conditions at that point that previously existed. I'm not aware of anything, another obstruction north of that, but perhaps there is north or downstream of that point.
Okay. Regarding the, does the quality of fill, native fill versus clean fill below the groundwater line affect the quality of the water draining through it? If, if you're just putting dirt below, or dirt, soil, rocks, whatever it is that you're putting, below the groundwater line, does it affect the groundwater?
And now you're referring to the fill being placed in the hole.
I'm just asking if, I'm just asking the question, it's a yes or no question.
Certainly, if you're putting material into water, the constituency, the, of that material will affect the water, except if it is something that's not leachable. If it's something that's very stable and does not leach into the water. But if you had something that is very leachable and is soluble and can get into the water, then it's gonna have an effect on it. Could be good, could be bad.
So, I, I'm under, I'm trying to understand the whole concept of groundwater. But I guess groundwater usually perches on top of a ledge, something like that. If you move the ledge, then you've created this well, the groundwater. Is that how it works? I don't understand completely why we can only use, I do understand why they want native pour fill underneath the, underneath the liner. But it would seem to me that the quality of the fill above the liner is equally as important because that's what the water is going to drain through to get to the groundwater. Am I correct on that?
In the area of the liner, is the, refresh my memory, that Kevin, I'm sorry, it's being posed over the liner?
I'm sorry, I'm not really referring to the liner. Wait a minute, Kevin, let me finish. I'm not even really, really referring to the liner, and I'm, I misspoke, I'm sorry. I'm talking about the hole. We were talking about native soil up to 411, and that's where the groundwater line is expected to be. And after that, it's okay to be clean fill or something like that. And I'm asking, isn't it just as important to have a high-quality material above the groundwater line as it is below the groundwater line?
Not if there's a liner above it.
Okay. And what kind of a liner would you say would be sufficient to separate the two?
Uh.
Wait a minute, how can, how can that, wait a minute? The liner above the top of the?
It's a, this is, I'm familiar with this, but it's not specifically my area of expertise. But I know liners, like for landfills, there were areas with contaminated soil. They put a liner above it all the time to prevent the rainwater from going through it into the area of contaminated soils to help, to prevent the spread of any contaminants from those soils to reach groundwater. So, if you have a liner above, it prevents rainwater from passing down through that material. Now, and that's, you put the clean material in the groundwater where the groundwater is already moving through it. And if you have a liner above the material that's above that, it's preventing surface, surface water from washing down through that material.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for clarifying this for me. In your report, on page 14, 5.2.2, you said there's sedimentation that you have seen in wetlands one and two. Is this still happening?
I don't know. It's not happening to the rate that it was in the past. For example, it's, some of that sedimentation occurred when the watersheds, because the watersheds have changed, so water's not being drained to some of those areas now. So, there isn't a, there isn't potential for that sedimentation.
How much, um, some, how much is done?
It, what I recall, it was just three, zero to three inches in some areas along the fringe of the wetland. It did not.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Right. It was within, I'd have to go out, I would have to measure it. But my recollection was 10 to 20 feet into the wetland, zero to three inches.
What would you say was the nature of the sedimentation?
It was, it appeared to be native material, native soils originated from native soil.
Would the creation of more watershed drainage and planting of that area providing more habitat and protection for the wetland area animals, would that be more beneficial to the wetland and V P vernal pool than pumping of water?
By, would the, I know we're proposing, Kevin, what's the width of the buffer that we're proposing to restore? Are we looking at the vernal pool envelope?
We, we expanded, yes, for the area that we proposed. Again, we had previously proposed the greater area, but that was denied by the commission.
Let's not talk about that, Kevin. Let's talk about this right now. We're not going back into the one that we denied, okay? Please, that's dead.
You're, but that's what you're doing.
I wanna, and actually, I'm asking, I'm asking Kenny, so, if you don't mind, I'll continue asking the questions. Okay. I, I understand, though, having read Calhoun and Clemmons' manual and that kind of thing, that the more upwind review, the more habitat, the more buffer there is, the better it is for the health of the wetlands. Is this not true?
It's, it's good to have buffers around wetlands, yes. And the distance, depending on what the function of the buffers are, you can have varying widths. But for hap, certainly, vegetated buffers provide habitat.
Thank you. How can we prevent too much water from flooding the northeast wetland where there will be sheet flow from the watershed drainage as well as pumping?
Through monitoring.
So, what would be the effect of too much water?
You know, um, if, if you had to choose between not enough water and too much water, I'd prefer to have too much water. For example, a beaver dam creates a situation where you have, quote, too, too much water. But the, when a beaver establishes a dam, it creates a very high-quality wetland habitat. So, in my experience, more water to a wetland, it will change it, but it often creates more high-quality habitat. I don't expect that to be an issue here, because the, if we, because this wetland does not have a dam, the water will continue to flow out. So, it's gonna reach the height, its outlet control level of land that controls the amount of water that backs up into the wetland, that, that has not changed. So, it, if anything, the only way additional water would affect this is that instead of maybe drying out in, by July 1st, water on the surface, it may get another couple of weeks into July where you have some standing water. But through monitoring, we will, we, we can prevent that, we will prevent that. But I don't see it to be an issue. What's really an issue is not enough water.
Thank you very much for your.
Lo, speak up a little bit if you can.
I'm sorry, I'm getting dry. If somebody else wants to take the floor for a while, that would be great.
Any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Well said.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gengers. Commissioner Stewart?
Yeah, Kevin, can you talk about, briefly about your proposed site restoration plan?
Sure. In general?
Yeah, in general. Like, like, what's, what's supposed to be in the center of that horseshoe, that painted horseshoe?
Painted horseshoe?
Well, you got a potential building shown, and you've got a driveway that goes in and goes out.
Oh, oh, you mean in that, in the section that we provided, just showing how it could possibly work from a?
Develop the site and how you would potentially treat the water going to the, to your vernal pool.
Sure. Donna, if you can actually allow me to share my screen, I can pull that up real quick and talk through that for, for Commissioner Stewart.
The reason, just, just so you understand, the reason why I'm asking is, if we're going through this much work to, to raise the, the level to hydrate the, the vernal pool, I'm just concerned that, that then we develop something that is, that degrades the water that goes to the vernal pool, and we've gone through all this work and not accomplished anything.
Sure. Donna, I think you actually made Keith the presenter, not me.
Yes, I am.
I won't share your.
I wanna be a presenter too.
I've never done that before.
Here we go. So, the purpose of this, of this exhibit, which we submitted to the commission for consideration, was really just a way to show that there's a, you know, there's a, there's an ability to develop this pad once it's established, collect stormwater, treat it, you know, collect it, treat it, and discharge it further south, so it's not just the northern end, but as far south as we can. And one of the things that we talked about at the last meeting was, how do we ensure that that stormwater that's collected, you know, provide, you know, sufficient renovations so the water that gets there in the future, if and when the property's ever developed, is of sufficient quality to not impact the wetlands? And what I said was at the time was, the beauty of it is, that's gonna require an application in front of the commission. So, if and when a pad is ever developed here, you know, there are all kinds of measures that could be incorporated into a design to ensure that that water gets properly renovated so that your point is never realized. So, you know, we, I, I agree, we wouldn't wanna allow this to happen and then just allow a future application to, you know, just dump a bunch of parking, parking lot drainage not properly cleaned into that wetland. So, there are a number of different measures that could be implemented. There can be sand filters incorporated, there can be biofiltration swales, there can be all kinds of measures incorporated into a future design. But the beauty of it is, that design will come before this commission in the future, or the wetlands commission in the future. So, so, we don't really have to do that now, but we can, you know, the commission can ensure that any future development incorporate all of those things because this is such a sensitive area that we wanna make sure this, this restoration and mediation is successful. You know, from a, from a concept standpoint, you know, this is just, this would likely be parking lot or something like that. But that's all, you know, again, that's just in the future, how it could possibly, possibly be developed. But, you know, it's all subject to future consideration in front of this commission. So, you know, the only thing that this commission is approving is the grading to allow for the applicant to basically develop a stabilized pad that's seated and stabilized that would superficially drain to that wetland, and to allow for them to put in a new pump on four, a new well on four Independence, and then connect that into that system that's already been installed. And Bill has indicated is, is being positive reserve. So, so, you know, I guess that's what I was, that's the basis or the impetus for this plan. But again, I think there's, there's adequate room to provide additional renovation of stormwater prior to discharge into that, into that natural resource.
Well, when I, when I look at this, I assume you'll have catch bases throughout the site.
Right.
And, and you're, and you're showing a pipe that's, I don't know, two, three feet down. Is that much else you could do other than, than a storm, a stormwater structure and, and a pipe discharging? Because you can't get the water back out of the ground. You know, I mean, I would just love to see something that, that would be approvable because I'm, I'm thinking that once we approve this pad site, you, you come back with a design, and, and I think we're pretty much required at that point to, to give you an approval with something because we've approved a pad site for a building. I think we've, hey, you know, unless you can, unless you can show me some, some, some method of, of, of development that makes sense, you know, I'd have a tough time, I have a tough time, you know, approving it given that I don't know how you'd ever build a, a building on there. And, and I'm not sure that, that a storm scepter is gonna, gonna provide enough treatment given that you're, you're, the majority of the site is, is, is gonna be developed. Yeah, you've got 80 feet, 80 or 100 feet of, of buffer area, but most of that area is, is gonna be impacted and collected, and is gonna be a parking lot or, or roof. And I'm not sure that going through one storm scepter, it, or, or a few storm scepters is gonna be, is gonna be enough. I don't know how you would do, how you would do swales because I don't see how you can get it out of the ground easily, not given the, not given the, the slope and the, and the elevation you got in the, in the, in the pad site. And I understand that, that we wanted you to lower the height, and you could have raised it up further and had, had more ability.
I'm, I'm certainly not suggesting that a storm scepter or a hydrodynamic separator is sufficient renovation to discharge into this wetland and the vernal pool. I'm not suggesting that at all. And what I, what I said was, there are a number of other measures that you could incorporate by doing a subsurface sand filter or something comparable that you could build into that, that buffer area. or something comparable that you could build into that, that, uh, buffer area, so that any water has to discharge through something that can, that can provide sufficient, um, remediation and renovation of that stormwater. And I think, you know, we're not proposing any of that right now, but I think, um, you know, those are, those are primary treatment measures that, that are, that are enumerated in the Water Quality Manual that shows, you know, additional things could happen, and those could happen subsurficially, so that this pipe, instead of just having a direct discharge, and, and again, this is something that would be worked through, I think, at a future application, you could do a large subsurface, you know, sand filter, where you discharge into that, that meanders through another filtration medium prior to discharge into that wetland. So there's, there's certainly other measures that can be employed here, um, to, to address that. You know, I'm, I'm trying to pull up the Water Quality Manual and maybe show you some examples on how that could get incorporated, but I'm, um, while we talk, but there's definitely ways to do it.
Uh, Commissioner Stewart, I might want to chime in on your comment. Um, I think though this application is basically restoring raw, you know, recreating the raw lot, the raw land. So it's all it really is. So whenever the building is proposed, you know, any and every type of, I don't know if that's the right term to use, type of, you know, water treatment devices is, you know, is possible to be used or whatever, whoever's required. They're just trying to basically right now, make it back to, you know, what the pre-existing, it's not pre-existing, but, you know, raw land, that was what it was intended to be in the first application of '06. Was a, you know, level and then, you know, kind of have a, you know, a pad site ready.
Yeah, I just, I, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that there was a feasible method of, of treating the, the water coming off that, that future development.
I make sure there's something out there. They do this stuff all the time, all sorts of different pieces of property, different elevations, different shapes, different.
I'm sure Kevin will come up with something, some picture.
Yeah, uh, was there anything?
I think we can move on and, and, and deal with it. There we go.
Cause I got, I need Kevin to draw me a picture before we close this meeting.
There, I can, I, I can try to be quick. You know, there's all kinds of sand filtration mediums that you can employ from a stormwater quality standpoint that can do exactly what you're looking for. Um, this is an Austin sand filter, and I'm just kind of scrolling, scrolling through, but here's, you know, here's a perfect example, you know, here's a sand filter layer that's built into a, a, a larger type of basin. You can incorporate all kinds of things into a subsurface system within that slope itself. Um, you know, here's a DC underground sand filter. Again, it's, it's with some chambers and things like that, but there's all kinds of measures in the, you know, Water Quality Manual that has, that, and there's all kinds of new technology being developed. Um, I certainly think that you can provide sufficient, you know, filtration medium and things like that.
And, and you're saying that those, those devices don't need any more head than, than what you've got on this site?
No, and, and the other, one of the other things is that, that the beauty of, of an industrial development or something like that, you know, that storm, that the roof drainage is clean. So that roof water also provides additional sufficient head, because you have all that drainage coming off the roof, down those downspouts being collected, and also to push that water through that filtration medium.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody else before I ask my question? Okay, Kevin, on the, uh, the new proposed, you know, grading plan with number four primarily as the, as the source of all the watershed, can you draw like a little chart or a little diagram showing, I think I might have asked this before, but I can't remember, um, showing where the water, how it's going to travel through the wetlands? Like, you know, the, the different systems there, where it's ultimately going to leave the property? And then if there's in fact, any areas that, because we're moving everything to four, right? All the watershed to four that might be getting missed. Like that was once getting, uh, you know, I would, can't say offsite runoff, but, um, that, there was once watershed that's, you know, no longer attributing to, so that might, you know, obviously we're going to restore a lot of it, and, and some areas are going to get a lot of water, but if there's some spots are actually going to kind of not gain it, gain, gain, gain any from this plan.
Sure, so, um, yeah, here, so I can, I can certainly, uh, identify some of those, um, things. So, so yeah, so we have, so there's, remember, there's two methods of, of rehydration here. There's the pump, which is working immediately, and that system runs along the entire wetland system, dividing all the way down to the southern reach. Right now that's being fed from the south, but our plan proposes to relocate, relocate that well here, and then connect into that same system. So that's a way to mechanically rehydrate all the way down to the south. All of this area then is going to drain superficially into here. Um, and that pipe can even, you know, future development can even pipe it further, but we still have that rehydration. This entire system for this wetland goes from south to north. Um, so part of this is the remediation of that corduroy bridge crossing, and the re, um, creation of wetlands here, um, so that's going to handle that. You know, everything else, we've matched drainage patterns, we've worked extensively with Scott to ensure that those volumes are matched. Um, so I think that's being addressed, um, as part of the application. To the east of us, this system travels, uh, north to south, but our activity has no, um, implication on that, on that watershed whatsoever.
So, so, all right, so if you, could you change to a different color?
Again.
Blue.
Okay.
So as the water's leaving the, the new grading on four and entering the, the wetland system, let's just say it was a flash flood. Where would you see like the majority of the water going and then leaving the property?
It would go this way.
Which is south or southeast?
It would, it would go, it would go southeast toward the wetland, and then then once it hit the wetland system, it would go from south to north.
So, so everything from below the bottom of your blue arrow, arrow, s- south, is it getting any watershed from this, this grading? So it's uphill, so to speak? And that's all it's getting it now because we're pumping it?
Correct. So all this is going this way. To either contribute back to the west branch of the Paquonak, which runs like this.
Yeah.
Or through the water quality basins, which actually then follow the same path.
Um, okay.
And then ultimately, it actually splits, part of it comes underneath here, and part of it comes around underneath Cambridge Drive there.
Gotcha. So the, the, where is the, just, uh, if you got, uh, I don't know, what do you got, uh, orange? Where is the line, just draw on the line of where the, the, like the peak between the two, the two wetlands, the one that goes north, the one that goes south, the kind of like delineate, like what's unaffected, if you know what I mean?
That, that, that crest is kind of somewhere like that.
Okay. All right, so is there, is there a way to, I don't know how much the grade, I mean, I know I walked it a couple of times, but I don't know how much the grading is, but is there a way to maybe put like a swale in the middle of, of there and get a little more water towards the south side? Or is it just that not feasible? If you know what I mean, like, you're showing these two arrows up a four, coming southeast, and then making a, you know, hard left and going north. Would there be a way to put like a swale and draw like a little more of that watershed south into that wetlands? The part that's being hydrated by the pump?
You know, there, there is some room, um, between the existing face to probably create a little bit more of a swell that would run, uh, you know, a little bit, let me get a different color here, because we're,
Yeah.
We have that capability. I'm going to go a little purple action. I do think there's a way we can probably propose some additional activity, or additional grading, kind of in between the wetland edge and the face.
Yeah.
Um, to bring some more of that water from north to south, so that can kind of meander in here. Um, you know, we have some, you know, we're, we're, we probably have a few, we probably have about three or four feet in elevation to work with between, you know, the four fifty-seven or so, and then the wetland itself is probably at around four fifty-two, as you continue further south.
Okay.
We probably could propose some additional activity, um, above, you know, in between the face and the wetland edge itself, to, to get some more superficial flow that, in that direction.
Yeah, I think that would probably be more towards the goal that we're trying to accomplish by, you know, reducing the amount of fill coming in, but also, you know, when you're pushed all the watershed up to four, it seems like it's taking a big shortcut, and that would, uh, that would certainly, I think, help tremendously. What, and then, how far would that, so you drew that purple down, how far would that influence like in a circle to the southern part of that wetlands? Where would the influence of water be? Then coming back up around through the, the peak, the crest?
I think, I think we could probably get somewhere, you know, in here to then feed back up, you know, but, but one of the things that I wanted to say is, I don't think, I don't know if we want to do that, well, I think we probably would, yeah. I'm hesitant to have a lot of disturbance in a narrow area adjacent to that wetland edge, but I think we can probably do, you know, we can probably do enough to, to get it a little bit further south than where we have this, this edge right now.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't have to be more than a small swale, really. I mean, not small, you know what I mean? Just enough to get some water. And then again, it, it kind of like, that kind of, I think, in the long term, makes the pump become less significant to the, to the overall restoration, because it does just seem like, you know, you're talking about, what is that? Uh, you're adding how much watershed on four? 10 acres, was it 10 acres?
Six and a half acres.
Six and a half acres. I mean, that's a lot of runoff to, to have, to inhabit, you know, so quickly make its way through the wetland system so fast and off the property. Right?
I think we can provide some, some detailed spot grades to show how that can be accomplished.
Okay. That's it for me. That's all, that was my biggest concern, is it just to use that water, you know, use that grading to get as much water throughout that wetland system.
Keith, if the commission will indulge me, um, I've been very disappointed. I've, I've mentioned a couple of configurations. Oh, at least four or five times so far, and nothing has been even considered. So I, I made up some plans, not plans, but I made up some cut and paste drawings of things that I think could work. They would address Jim's concerns, they would address your concerns, and they would bring forward some of the concepts that were, um, presented previously. So if Donna would make me presenter, I will show you what I'm talking about. Bear with, um, bear with me for a minute, because I've never done this before. This is a picture of the 2006 plan that was spoken about ad infinitum at the previous application. Got too many screens here. Okay, this is picture of that application, which, Keith, you mentioned many times that you would like to see it go back to wherever that was. It basically is very similar to the one that we have now. Um, except that the, the big division, the hugest difference in elevation is more, more than 100 feet from the wetlands, or about 100 feet from the wetlands. But it's an equal amount of, um, ditch, I want to call it, for lack of better vocabulary with this hour. This was the original plan. There was going to be a building here, there was going to be a large, um, I'm losing it. There was going to be a large, um, difference in grade there, and same thing here. It was so large a difference that they all turned into one line. So you and Ross had both indicated that you wouldn't mind seeing it go back to originally, 2000, originally approved 2006 plan. So I just wanted to show it to you, and note that the upland review along the entire wetland, all the way up to the top, undisturbed. Now, you can see by these contour lines here, that this is the current condition. And so just keep that in mind, this was the, the approved plan that was talked about, I can't tell you how many times, that previously approved 2006 plan. And in Kevin's, in the, um, project narrative, one of the paragraphs starts with, "The project proposes to restore existing watershed shed patterns similar to that of what was previously approved." Okay, this is what was previously approved. So, going to a different concept. This is a variation that I had mentioned last time. And that was to fill this portion here and leave this, and, and fill this portion here, leaving all of this developable on 64 Cambridge. This remains, if, if you put the clay liner here, you get all this drainage that is going to completely restore that, or completely hydrate that wetland with, I think it was 65% I believe was the number that Kevin has spoken up. And that should substantially rehydrate the wetlands despite that. And the clay liner is here, it's not going to be part of the development. This leaves this pad here to be completely developable, and it, it does not change the clay liner at all. It doesn't, you know, we won't have to worry about the liner being disturbed. And the beauty of this one is, no pumping would be required. It was my understanding from the beginning that the pumping was going to be there, only until we got the watershed restored. Pump can't be a permanent measure. It's not, there's no way to monitor that over time. And if the pump died, nobody's going to know. And it's, nothing's going to be done about it, and then all this work that we've done will be for naught. So please, bear with me, I have one more concept. I want, this, pardon, this is literally cut and paste. This is just a piece of paper, so the contour lines don't match up. In fact, this contour would probably be, it could be a lot steeper, because you've seen some plans with different legends and, uh, different scale. I have one more thought. This was a derivation of the current one. And it, oh, okay, and this restores more of that watershed. The last one. The last one just changes angles. This one I think would have more fill, the previous one I believe would actually be fairly less fill. But it still takes most of the drainage and puts it up here, and puts it where it belongs. And can, and if you, if we could use this as our boundary for the clay liner, we would get, since this part all would have to be filled, and put the clay liner underneath that part, we would still be rehydrating this, we would leave this part. and put the clay liner underneath that part, we would still be rehydrating this, leave this part to be the development part. So these are my ideas. They do not, I don't think, substantially change the amount of fill that goes in. All it does is reorient the, the development. I'm trying not to be, I'm, I'm not trying to be adversarial. My goal as a commissioner is to restore the wetlands. And I'm, I believe that there are alternatives to what we've been shown. And I'm showing you what I think could be a workable alternative. Granted, it's not perfect. I'm not an engineer, but this is a concept that I think could be pursued. And I'd really like to see it. I'd like to see it without the pump. I'd like to see us be able to do this naturally, so we can just do it, get it done with, and forget it. And that would be my goal. So thank you for indulging me. And I hope that maybe this has opened up a new line of thinking for, for some, or all.
Commissioner Spence, I think, I have some comments on what you're showing us there. The last one looks like, just real quick, about the same amount of material then as required in their first proposal that we denied. Because that's bringing the whole, almost the majority of the property up to, to, uh, the Enterprise Drive, right? Because that's grading.
Well, not necessarily, because you wouldn't have to grade that high for all of it. I don't think. This, this proposal does take more fill than the other one does.
It's not that, it's just, it's, 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 it's with, if you put a curve in that grade line there, you're exactly at what the first, the first application was for the most.
Parts of that first application that I thought were very good. Actually, the very, very first proposal was not a bad one. It was just too much fill, way too high. It could have been cut down by 20 feet, which is what, um, Southwest Conservation suggested. But they did cut it down. They also said it.
They did cut it down.
I know they did.
Of course, the application went from like 1.3 to 1.1 or 1, whatever it was. I don't remember the numbers.
Not the point.
970.
Yeah.
But the difference was, on the first one, all of the flat pad was up here, and then the grading started, the downward grading started here. Then, when it came back at a lower elevation, all of a sudden, the grading started here and continued. It was a much steeper path on the first one, which I thought was a good idea, because it would be less likely to be, uh, proposed to be developed. But anyway, this is still just a concept. And, um, I personally kind of like A4, the original 2006 proposal. This is A, once again, it's got a smaller pad, less fill, except it might, it may be equal amount of fill, but it is what we have to be filled.
I want, Lois, you know, your, well, your, your interpretation there is, is, is very much what I was thinking during the pre-application discussions.
That's what I was thinking.
The difference is, though, if you go back to that one,
Okay.
Is that Kevin's team decided to move the watershed up all onto, onto the Independence Drive piece. So he still brought back the piece, the amount of square footage, so to speak, that was a violation against the previous 2006 plan. He just shifted it to the northern part of the, of the property. So in essence, the way I understand it, what, what my concern was of bringing back the unauthorized removal of watershed was done, but it was just put somewhere else to make the project a little more feasible and possibly to, for a major reduction of material and time.
But if it's not put in the right place, it's not doing the wetland any good.
Well, that's why I just had that discussion with Kevin about the swale.
Right, and, but even that is not as efficient as this, and this takes the clay liner out of the development. And that's a major, that's a major concern of mine. Um, and Jim absolutely, he, he said the same thing. I don't know that he actually feels completely like he was understood, or that he got his point across. I didn't feel like he did. And, um, I, I understand that completely, and that's been one of my major, major problems too. I'm not trying to stop development by any stretch, but if you were to do this one, you still have this pad, you have the other one, you have, you have two other pads, there's, it's a workable start. And I think that that we're not going to get back 100% of what was taken away. We know that. But if we can rehydrate these more efficiently, without the need of mechanical pumping offsite, which by the way, when you put a pump here, you're taking away the groundwater from here. So you're taking the groundwater, and you're moving it up here, and you're putting it down here, and it's picking up here. We're doing just going to. And that's not.
I, I, I just want, I just want to point out that we submitted a hydrogeologist's report, which showed a disconnection between the surficial groundwater and the deep bedrock groundwater. So I do not believe there'd be a connection or a loss of groundwater by, by installing a 500, 600-foot deep pump in that location. It would have no impact on the surficial groundwater.
Okay. That was one of Denise's comments too, that hadn't been addressed. Um.
We responded to Denise's comments.
Yeah, but I didn't see that one being addressed with the hydrogeologist's report. I could have missed it, but, um, anyway, I just want to leave that with, with everybody and see if there's something else we can do. I'm not trying to be adversarial. I'm trying to rehydrate a double A, tier one pool, some of the best water in the state. And this is a very, very precious resource. And we should do all we can to save it, preserve it, conserve it, whatever the right word is. We're not the Economic Development Commission. We're not in charge of that. We're not in charge of P and Z matters. Ours is strictly wetland conservation, and we can't forget that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Spence. Uh, any other commissioners want to make a comment on anything, uh, to the applicant, before I turn it back over to them to wrap up tonight? For sure.
I would just urge that, uh, that the applicant give serious consideration to what Lois has put forward here. Maybe draw some lines there that, that do follow the engineering scale on it, and see if it's viable.
All right, thank you. For sure.
I, I can offer just some, I can offer just some quick commentary. Um, so just doing some quick math, you know, I, I wish we could recreate a rock face, so it would more closely resemble what was originally approved in 2006, because we could do exactly that, and we still have sufficient developable area to actually justify this property being restored at all. Um, but just doing some quick math, you know, we have a, 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 a 30 to 70-foot cut that would need to be filled um, in order to recreate some of the, um, buffer areas that, that you just identified. And I'll provide more detailed, um, calculations, but just back of the napkin, that probably adds another 200,000 to 300,000 cubic yards of fill that would be required in order to do that. And it would, what it would do is because there's no way that there's any economic opportunity to construct a wall, which would provide a vertical face or a face that's more consistent with the rock face, you would then need, um, such a sufficient area to grade that back down via natural slope, you wouldn't be left with sufficient developable area on the site to justify any of this. And I'm really concerned that, um, the longer this goes on, the more likelihood there is that nothing will ever happen here at all. And the town will be left with a problem that they will have to resolve on their own devices. Because there has to be, there has to be a way to substantiate this effort, and unfortunately, that has to mean a way to monetize the site in the future. And without that, we're all wasting our time and our breath.
Uh, Kevin, do you want to keep this, uh, this open till the next meeting?
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure how much more, I mean, we can certainly dive into this more and to provide a more detailed response as to, you know, to further substantiate the, the, some of the statements that I just made. Um, uh, you know, I think, I think, I guess we still have to work through the bond issue, um, but I'm not sure.
Include your presentation tonight?
Well, I, I think we're, I think we've tried to, to, to be as responsive as we can be. I think we've, you know, we've been trying to work, work to get to a successful resolution. We, we made an application that was different, and it was denied. In that denial, the commission gave us clear direction. We clarified that direction, and we came back with a plan that we felt met all of the different components that was workable. And that's where we are. Um, I'm not sure there's, uh, I'm not sure how we can further amend this plan to, uh, achieve some of the other, uh, comments that were raised tonight, without completely reverting back to the old plan and requiring seven to 10 years to, to complete it.
So you, so Kevin, just, I'm just trying to see where, where we go from here. So obviously, you have a concern about the bond amount, so if you're saying that you're going to, um, somehow, um, you, you made, I think you made a, a, an, an offer, um, a reduction, you know, offered us, where you were going to do some kind of more, you know, crunch some more numbers, I don't know. Just want to know if you want to, you know, conclude your, your application, or leave it open till the next meeting?
I think, I think at this point, I guess we'd like to keep it open, so we can kind of try to, to, to tighten up some of those, um, loose ends, I guess, that are still there, uh, to try to minimize, um, you know, some of the open issues. So I guess we, I guess at this point, we'd request that to keep it open. We'd still like to see, um, Attorney Green's formal correspondence submitted. Um, even though I like to think we've, we've addressed most of those, but I guess at this point, we'd like to keep it open till the next meeting.
Great. Anything else?
I think Mr. Cartman was the one I addressed the commission.
Go ahead. Scott.
Commissioners, it's, it's Arnold Karp, the managing member of the LLCs that own these properties. You know, I, I've sat here, uh, and I've looked at, you know, it, it, we didn't bring you a plan that didn't take a lot of thought on Kevin's part and my entire working staff part. While this plan may not be perfect, it is certainly better than doing nothing. We have been here now going on two years. The best news that I heard was from Bill Kenny, who said, "Yep, the wetlands are showing some life, we're getting some water into it." But we could look at 500 different options. The point I want to make with the Wetlands Commission is I'm going to be back in front of you how many times over the next three to five years? A handful. So if something isn't working, and if something doesn't work, we're not going anywhere. But as Kevin pointed out, you know, uh, we had too much fill, we cut back the fill, we've come up with a plan that actually has to be economic for us. You know, a $700,000 bond, okay? Doesn't come without some financial hardships. I'd rather put the money into restoring the property than putting the money into a bond. You know what? If you don't think $250,000 or $300,000, uh, is a sufficient enough amount to keep our feet to the fire, I'm not sure that we can ever get over that hurdle. But we are here to work with the town, work with the commission, but I'm sorry, at this late a date, you know, I cannot think about changing the plan, coming back. This plan has shown already a semblance of working. Okay, it has reduced the fill. It has taken the time from the 10 years that didn't work down to five, hopefully, okay? Um, but from an applicant's standpoint, you know, we have done a lot of very hard work, very expensive work. So the, the concept of, let's look at five more options, I'm sure there are several other options. This is an option that we vetted as a team, that we've brought in front of this commission, hand in hand, to try to move this project forward. Okay? Um, and it's not like you get one bite at the apple. We will have to come back to you for any development plan and anything basically past the filling plan. So, uh, I understand there may not be unanimous, uh, agreement on this, but I think that this is a good plan that does the work that we want to see for the wetlands, and is certainly worth the time and the effort to approve this, okay? So that we can start to see if anything works. But the best news we got was, geez, we've been, uh, filling the wetlands. And you know what? Mechanically, it may not be the best thing, but that may be what is required until we can sort out all the details. There is no doubt that the water that comes off every road in Monroe will be dirtier than the water that would come off for Independence Drive with any sort of system that we put in, that would go into the wetlands. Okay, I'm in the town two days a week, and there's, you know, our west, our, our wetlands, while they continue to have dust and everything else. That dust isn't caused from, from this ownership. That was from a prior ownership. But you know what? There's a whole lot less garbage in the wetlands and everything else. We have done, uh, very good work as stewards of this property, and we seem to get no credit for it. And I'm sorry, but I, I continue to sit through these meetings where we continue to be vilified while we're here with a real working solution.
Thank you. Um, so I got 11 minutes to wrap up this meeting. Uh, so as quickly, I still got stuff on this agenda. So quickly, very quickly, Mr. Finn.
Yes, uh, look, I, I, I know we're all a little frustrated, and I, I know you're all volunteers. I know you all have full-time jobs that you do and, and have busy lives, but part of the frustration stems from the fact that this is the third time we've been before you on this application. And some of the comments that we got today that are very substantive would have been so much better if they were given to us at the first meeting or at the second meeting, so that we could have responded tonight to all these suggestions. Now, we are going to ask to keep the hearing open. I'm going to have to ask for an extension, because I believe the original 35 days will be up before the next hearing. And this is something frankly, that I, I've seen before, uh, with prior applications, is that we, we get very far into it, and then we get all these very substantive comments, and it would be so much better for all of us, all of us, if you all could find the time to get us your substantive comments earlier in the process. Now, if we change something and that causes you to have different thoughts, that's fair game. But again, a little frustration. I'm going to end my comments there. We are going to request that the hearings stay open. I think we do need an extension. I'm going to indicate on the record that we will consent to an extension to keep this hearing open. And, uh, I think that took about two minutes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Kevin, you're all set? From the applicant side?
Yeah.
All right.
Yep, we're going to, we're going to give you some revised detail to reflect your comments and some more analysis, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Kevin, may I interrupt one second? Can we also please see some sketches for just rudimentary plans? You said if we, if you grade the way, the way my plan is, that it would take away most of the developable area. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I want to see that. I want to see it with a 2:1. And like you have, you've used this, another section of the property when you're grading it. So I would like to see that plan and see why it's not working. Thank you.
Sure, and I, and we'll provide you earthquake calculations to show the additional fill and the additional duration it would take to complete those, uh.
That's fine, that's fine. For the record, Mr. Finn, I have recommended this at least four times over the course of the last nine months. So it's not like it's coming at the last minute. over the course of the last nine months. So it's not like it's coming at the last minute. So just.
Thank you. E, application here is determinations, none. Other, bond release reduction reports, none. Time extension, none. Discussion, none. F deliberation sessions, deliberation completed here and completing items from this agenda as determined by the commission. We have the, what was it? Hunter Cross Hill Road. Someone like to make a motion? Or do you want to table it till the next meeting? Anyone?
I want to table it till the next meeting. I, I, I can't even remember what we were talking about.
It's a little pond with the pipe and the plants and the 30 yards of soil.
Okay, forget about the table then.
What's that? Were we going to make a motion to allow that to be agent?
No, is that, we have to make a normal motion for, it's an application. So someone has to make a motion to draft a letter of approval.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion, we draft the letter of approval.
A motion for Chris Hall in a second.
One second.
Second for Commissioner Spence. All, well, on discussion, I think we just said that he's going to let us know what plants are going to go in to determine that they're, you know, on the list and acceptable, correct?
And that, yes, and that the.
Cell fence.
Yes.
Wrong, not cell fence, but wood chip burn. I think that was it. Wood chip burn. Are we all good? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passing. Thank you. All right. So now that's F. G. IWC agents' activity reports. Agent approvals IA 2021-18, 700, Christiana Drive, removal of trees and installation of fence. 14, permitted uses as a right. IPU dash 2018 dash 01, Department of Public Works, road repair, replacement or general maintenance. IW regulation sections 4.2C expires 3/28/2023. H enforcement deliberation, no public input, deliberation completed remediation submission, none. Administration review enforcement issues, none. Status updates, none. All right, general discussion, other minutes. Do I do minutes now or do you want to wait? Table it till next meeting?
Table it till next meeting.
Table it, okay. Everything else is tabled. So I'm going to make a motion, make a motion and adjourn this meeting.
A motion.
A motion for Chris Stewart to adjourn the meeting. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gingrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.